Permit number during that, the board I sent in, no due residential. This last month, no issue of complaints that were formal. The P and Z board did not meet in January. It just, or Justin Babetti's gonna quickly discuss that. That I sent normal assists. The city sent all the assists in January. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I reached out to, so. My understanding is the Bushman. Now that I want to have the agenda, because you asked to pull it.
No, I wasn't asked to pull it.
You said Dan called you and asked you to pull it?
Oh.
That's not the understanding that I have.
No, Dan never, I've tried to call Dan, two months on this project, and he never gave a response, or he didn't call me back.
And so why did he pull from the agenda?
So.
I had asked that it be on the agenda specifically, so we could talk about it. And Cynthia, Cynthia thought you told her Dan said to pull it, so.
No, I haven't called Dan. So I sent an email to Dan and Doug Brain, his engineer on February 2nd. Letting them know that city staff had looked at this proposal. Submittal. And we would not recommend it based on the no utilities, no sewer and water on the site. I heard nothing back from either of them, and then on. February 6th, Justin Zabowski sent me an email about this. Essentially saying, yes, we're gonna go ahead and push it through council. We definitely want to stay on the agenda for council meeting, our intentions are hard to request the council issue. To permit regardless of the recommendation of city staff or engineer from my experience. Experience council since for the council. I responded to Justin's email stating that the site is over thirty-three acres. Within the city limits, the site had no fire protection currently. The site is accessed through private gravel drive. In fact, it's thirty-three acres. Someday it will be subdivided. And these buildings would have no sewer water to them. Obviously, a plat filled with easements. Ingress, egress easements, a lot of engineering problems.
Which was why I wanted on the agenda so that we would have.
Well, if you let me finish, Marion. This was on, like I said, February 6th. It was sent out on a Thursday, Friday morning, which was last Friday morning, they need to do submittal. With sewer and water on.
Okay.
I obviously can't get it to Shane to review prior to the council meeting, so it was pulled. Because it wasn't, it can't be reviewed.
So I wanted it on here as an action, action item, so we could discuss it, irregardless of what you're doing. So we. I guess I'm upset by this, that you pulled something without, that I specifically.
Marion, I told you Monday morning.
People, and I, and I, I get that, but that's not your job to pull something on the agenda. My, his payers have asked that it be on the agenda. That's not your place.
Never responded.
Sure.
Staff meeting Monday morning, we were, I told you, it's been pulled. We could have had this discussion then.
I, I.
My statement.
Sure, go ahead.
We also had a submittal schedule. When a new submittal comes in. It has to meet the submittal schedule, regardless of who submits it.
I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the fact that I asked for it to be on here, not to take an action on it, but so that we could actually discuss it. Because there's issues with this.
I agree with you. Lots of issues.
So moving forward, because I specifically. Made it clear at a meeting that I was at with staff, that I wanted that item on the agenda, so that we as a whole could discuss it. And now we can't discuss it.
Well, I, I guess I fall back to the submittal schedule. That's the way I was told to do things. Prior. And I guess I, I, like I said, I said it at staff meeting Monday morning, it had been pulled. So I think we could have had this conversation now.
I, I, I wasn't aware that it had been pulled until today.
It was said in staff Monday morning.
So. I guess it doesn't matter. It was on the original agenda that I saw, and then now it's on my agenda.
Yeah, it submitted Friday morning.
Cynthia about it, she had said. Something totally different than what you said.
Well, I assumed that he had communicated with.
I can't get in. Can't get in front of him.
But.
This whole project is being led by P and Z, Justin Zabowski. Not the project.
But that's fine. So that means that there's things that we need to talk about.
I agree with you.
So with the new submittal on Friday, though. You, you know, if the council had discussed it tonight, you wouldn't know whether staff was gonna recommend it or not, because they hadn't. Even reviewed the new plan.
Well, at this, at this point, I guess that being said, I. I'm not looking to approve anything. That wasn't my goal. My goal, my goal was, they're, they're saying no, they're saying yes. And I think there's a lot of gray water as far as what's allowed and what's not allowed, and that's our decision.
Well, I agree. Like I told you at staff meeting Monday, this is gonna go up front of P and Z next Tuesday. To be discussed at their level, and then I'm assuming by March, they'll have some input for council.
So when it's on, if we're assuming the March agenda, then council will have full information. From this new submittal and P and Z input and staff input, but.
Well, they're asking for a special meetings because it was not on the agenda tonight, and we can't discuss it. So they are pushing to have a special meeting just to talk about this.
I would advise council not to accept that special meeting until everyone. Like I told you Monday at the staff meeting, I feel like the city needs to pump the brakes on this submittal. Because it's thirty-three acres. There's no sewer water, there's no fire hydrants.
That's why we need to. This, us. So I wanna know what. What our policy is, what our zoning is. If someone has a large parcel of land. And it hasn't been subdivided, it's one parcel, and they choose to put up their own buildings. And not subdivide it. Can they do that? Or not? So if you own, say you own ten acres, and you decide to put up two buildings.
Zone it, Esther.
And zone it, Esther, and they, when you wanna put up two buildings that fit the use for your property. They need the offsets. The only concerns are fire, water, sewer. So you have to have your engineer draw those things in and figure out how you're gonna service those things.
Which they refuse to do till I got my email back, if we're gonna reject this.
But, I'm just saying, so if they do those things. Does it need all the requirements that we have for a. Or do we have the right to tell them, no, you can't do that, you have to subdivide, or no, you can't do that because of future potential growth?
Yes, I think absolutely you have that right. That's why every building to permit comes to council.
I don't think you do. It's their private property. It would be like if I owned, if I owned ten acres, and I wanted to put up. A horse barn and a pig barn and. And then I decide later on I might wanna rent it out, I might not wanna rent it out. Do we have the right to say I can't do that on my own property? Because in the future, if. Do you understand what I'm saying? It, it either is okay or it's not. Zoning in our current procedure. That's why I wanted to talk to you guys. Say what, how do we move forward, because I.
And I believe this is such a large site, I think you should include P and Z in this. And take a good look at this before jumping on it. Because once you write the first building permit for thirty-three acre site, you don't stop writing, so it's cool.
Well, these are questions that we moved to ask, yeah. But I mean, again, then is that our right to tell someone else how they lose their property?
Certainly. I had to give permission to put it up thirty-six inch height pool, so I think, yeah, when it comes to buildings, we do have, right? To have some.
Well, so. So if you tell them, they got probably building permit, and they give your building permit, and it meets all of our criteria. Then on what, what grounds do you reject that? It meets all of our building permit criteria? That's what I'm asking.
I, I honestly think you're, right now, face of decision. That you're gonna create a big problem for the city down the road on a thirty-three acre site. You don't pump the brakes and think about this thoroughly. Through the P and Z and the council, your engineer. There's no reason to rush into decision.
Okay, that, well, I guess, and here's something else, is they said they've been working on this for about a year. On and off, you know, what we can do, what we can't do with the building, you know, got the building permit going, those kinds of things. But this is the first time now they're hearing about this. You can't do this because your property is too big. So what do they do about that? They just don't get to build their building until we tell them the plan?
Certainly. Tell it to every builder. So the city issues the building permit. This is a unique situation, if you're looking at. It's thirty-three acres, has no city services to it. Doesn't have public driveway to it, private drive.
So in the future, they wouldn't be able to put in a city street, so how would it be able to subdivide if you can't? You wouldn't be able to sub-lot in the future, if that's the case, because you wouldn't be able to meet our requirements.
No one can, Marion, till they, they need the right of way to the city, just like any other.
I don't know, I just think that. They want, they wanna have, they would like to have special meeting or nothing else, just to discuss this.
I guess my point is, how are you gonna discuss it without, without all the info? You won't know what their latest submittal was, whether it needs to be asked or not, what did they change? And you have to give staff time to review it. That's why we have submittal schedules.
But it's, I think it's been rolling for months.
No, no, it hasn't.
They just submitted that, hi.
The newest, the newest one. But I mean, I guess my point is, and that's why I brought this up, was, was like, just because it's a large parcel. Do we need to, do we move to address that differently? Do we change our.
Certainly.
Our policies and procedures to do that differently moving forward?
Definitely.
I think it's some, I don't think it warrants, right, but it's speculative, council meeting. If, if this has been worked on over a year. I don't know why maybe you'd say that at our next meeting. And so.
They don't wanna wait a whole month, because they have, you know, they wanna get started on buildings, this line.
I don't, that's our issue. They want to get started earlier, so we have to question.
Without having the full information, and we don't have to continue on the subtral. Is, if they were to rush to build, that's why I couldn't wait until Friday. Better than last. Again, I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, so when they built the building that originally, when they submitted it up, they were told everything was fine, and then they said, no, you can't remove it now, you gotta have water, sewers, and they had to be submitted.
They were never told everything was fine, Marion. They were never told everything was fine.
So this is the issue that I'm here, so. Talk about that. But. I just didn't know what, what legal right do we have to say? If it. If they, if they do, they put in the water and the sewer, and they put in the fire hydrants. And that meets all of our criteria, at this point, do we legally have the right to tell them no?
I think that's the question that needs to go up front, P and Z first.
Well, and that's why, I think we were supposed to, we were going to meet to discuss some of these things.
Thursday morning, we are gonna meet staff.
Friday morning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we, we were going to meet on Friday to discuss some of these things. But I wanted to talk to you guys about it, because I know what my, I don't. I know what I think is fair, and I know what I think is right, but. The other side of that is, it is a large parcel, and you don't want to pudge, pudge, and you don't wanna have issues.
And it's an industrial site. It's all industrial. Potential for a brownfield. You guys know what brownfield is?
They're pretty.
Harbors that moves down, down Cidera, it's brownfields. The city ended up going in, anything ended all up in that kind of. There's potential for a brownfield in this situation.
I don't think you must do that someplace.
Property can be sold.
About the drainage. Fifth one's no.
So I guess that's, if so, I guess I would like to meet out of middle. If someone else would like to maybe meet with them on Friday morning, and then maybe invite Justin or Dan to come to the meeting. So that everyone can be on the same page and just same room and have same conversations, because I get a lot of he said, she said, he said. And I don't know what has actual been. So.
So I don't know, see, staff is ready for them to be in the room, because they haven't even had a chance to review their latest submittal.
I think all that shows is water and treatment, I had, I had to get them to go, so. I mean, I'll, I'll come to the meeting on Friday. I just would like to know, moving forward, what direction that is. Because they're gonna wanna know, because they, they obviously have things that they wanna do there, does that mean that. You know, what do we need? Would we not need? They don't wanna have them go through all these hoops and permit, doesn't necessarily have, needs everything, and then. Now there's, we can't do this for some other reason.
Oh, Shane, didn't you say they have a long-term plan for it?
So it's a parcel.
Then Dan didn't have a long-term plan, so they did not have a long-term plan.
There was no quill.
Why, when you got, these are all things that we're creating, we need to. And start discussing with them, what would be the aim of this? But I think as we said. Parcel within the city limits.
My understanding is they're straight, we're in, we're straight with storage, but again, I don't know that for sure. So I just need to. Find out what our actual recourse did it to legally, and then find out from them what they're into cases, and make sure it meets the shameless requirements.
This is on P and Z's, for, for Tuesday night, no.
Next Tuesday.
P and Z's, when we're discussing this.
Because it's such a large site, so.
Okay, so enough of that, I guess. I will meet with Shane on, and staff on Friday morning. How would you like us to proceed from that? Do you wanna have them? After they get the thingy, you want to have them move that forward to P and Z, and then what does it tell Bushman?
I already sent an email to Bushman saying it's on the, soon as it'll be on the agenda, it'll be March. He doesn't respond, but, you know, of course, on the fact of what he told me, so.
Well, I'm telling you that that is not what they would like.
But they aren't pro. I mean, look, I, I, I'm not trying to make you know this, but.
I, and I am in the, like, I, I.
It sounds like you, you're not having the rest of the time being in the building.
No, I know.
Um, perhaps if we want to speed from so long, we can start to involve Chris, but, Chris. And then we can start the report. It, it, it really sounds, honestly.
Certainly, maybe they.
It's hard, it sounds very middle school. I'm not gonna talk to Chris, who's gonna tell you, and then put you in, and then hear that.
Maybe they need to participate, come to the P and Z meeting, so they can discuss what they're. Okay.
Chris.
All right, I'm just gonna tell them that they need work, we'll go on our end, with Shane and Chris, and figure out what, what they need to have to meet. The requirements for what our current standard is. Meanwhile, we'll see if they can't participate in.
Sorry.
Thanks. To, to answer any questions or concern with P and Z and all this.
Over the part.
True, yeah, that's correct. And then hopefully we can move forward in some kind of. Calm fashion. Flynn?
Hey, Linda, I made this apartment. For the local park today, we're still working on stuff, getting ready for spring, everything's going good, seeing results. Good supply yet, so we'll be done. One, do I know, probably the lastest. So we're set to be at the other. I don't know how many of you guys heard. It was, oh, three weeks ago or so, we had a, somebody trailer stuck on the road tracks. Going around the interval stream. Which got us kinda like, burned up pretty quick, hit in this apartment, and the good thing is, is. No problems, the road was shut down, they were gonna do maintenance anyway, thank God, so the road seemed to get stuck, so. Everything was good. We got lucky.
No, most of yours.
No, no, just normal semi, and that's kind of why we've been pushing that project for so long. They can, so engineers can help us get some thoughts and plans, and then. I don't know if it really helped or not, but it helped maybe some, a little bit of communication with the crowd. But they're back, kind of, and they're doing great, they're all, but. So it is what it is. Can't wait to get it fixed. The other thing, Brittany, they do last month was ten, ten day. Excuse me, EMA drill, that was a economic, economic recovery support function. Through all my insecurity, I spent a day doing that. It was kind of a good drill, it was good for them, they're trying to make a better planning, and they wanted to see. What the town's needs were, and what, how we reacted to that. Issues, and they didn't have much problem with that for Lynn County, because there's been so many things up the last ten, twelve years. So we had the good feedback to share a lot of counties throughout the state, so that was kind of interesting. But today, a couple of us, the three of us went to a horizontal safety class, and. Went good. Laid what we started in our, took us, kind of grade one introductory classes, so we're using the process. Sort of get ready to test out where's your grade one water treatment. So that seems like it's going good. Snowblower killer cheater, be right about a week ago. So that's great. The only negative is, our, one of our part-time workers, Chase Wurda. Is probably not gonna come back this spring, so we'll be looking to play some. So he's a great employee. Gonna miss him. That's it. Only a program.
Thank you. Watering waste wire, Kevin?
Kevin, stand with water waste, but happy down, I'm staying, everybody, he's a pro, he's a. My wife told me we have that anymore. I got a few things, the first thing was, last week, we did a week, we had a D and R inspection on our water system. And the full report and my responses in the inter packet. There is a couple highlighted areas that I want to make sure that you guys were aware of. The first one was on the sources. What I highlighted and read. On that. Talks about, they adopt the standards of the waterworks as their rules. And, like, there you go, Cynthia, thank you. And what it talks about is. Being able to meet your demand for your water system with your largest well lot of service. So keep that in mind as we go forward in with our new water project. All right? And everything in there, you can see all the responses, we addressed everything that they had to deal with. One other thing, a little further down. Is they highlighted that. Our lead and copper inventory that we've been working on, they were very happy with as far along as we are. And to date, we have no lead or galvanized required replacements, so we have. Our water system is relatively new, nineteen fifty-nine. So back then, they were using copper, lead wasn't really used anymore. So we may find some older homes that have lead lines to their well, and they hooked it up, but we haven't come across them yet. So. But other than that, on about the last page, you will see. That there were no significant deficiencies and no fire deficiencies, we just. Had some recommendations, and everything that they wanted us required to be done is already finished and completed. So. And I had Brian and Brandon go along with Amber to give her the tour of the facility, so they were kind of aware. How these inspections go. Then got a notice, or a letter, an email, it's smart from the Norway Fire Chief. The, the D and R, Norway failed their D and R water quality and pressure test. Basically, Norway did not use any more of their fire hydrants for their system. If they opened one hydrant, the pressure drop blows might be a size somewhere in their system, which is against the rules. So. That's kind of a big problem, you know, and. Part of this, what I wanted to say is, the Prairie Creek Crossing is crucial to us maintaining. Attic pressure on that side of town when towers out of service for a month, a month and a half. So I just, they do watch this stuff, and they do shut systems down when, when it's thwarted, especially when it. Needs to protect the public. And basically, the twenty PSI is, if the drop's that low, they may have a backside, then out of somebody's house into the system, and have a bigger problem with contaminants. So. The other thing, the one graph, Cynthia on the static levels. Thank you. There's gonna be another subject a little further on in the agenda that talks about Johnson County, who wanted to do a. Survey and evaluation and study on the salarian aquifer. Well, I've been tracking this for a long time in our area. And if you look at the data, when our, when our summertime comes up. The salarian actually drops down to two to thirteen, and elevation stays that way all summer. But it's not only us doing that, all right? Marion has one well that pulls two thousand gallons a minute out of that well, out of the salarian. Eli's in it, Mount Vernon's in it. Marion's in it, our. Solon, North Liberty, Iowa City, everybody's fighting for water. Okay, so now they wanna do a study to see. Who's gonna be able to get what recommendations, then goes to the state, and this goes back to where I was talking about. Someday, the salarian's gonna get monitored and regulated. And I think this is not too far away before that happens. So, but in our case. Even after two years, we never were fully recovered. And that's not only due to just us, that's due to everybody upstream from us taking more water out of the system as well. So Iowa City and that, Coroville, North Liberty, they're downstream from us. So, you know, they wanna protect the water they can get. So. And the last thing. Would be a graph that we wanted to talk about. Kind of the, the volume of the, our flows, our system. What I wanted to, I'm gonna talk about the first two columns, and then Brian's gonna come up and talk about the rest. So. Last year. We had a record usage of water. And this year, in twenty twenty-two, we went through seventy-seven point five million gallons. Which actually is three point four million less than twenty-one. Three things can contribute to that. We dial back splash pad a little bit. Nobody really seemed to notice, but it worked. Also, the big construction projects like the ITC power lines, there is a tremendous amount of water for total water usage. That went down, plus customer consumptions really helped too, so. Three things have contributed to a core clean tree reduction in water use for all of the last year. The, on the graph, I wanted to make comment, the first one is two thousand sixteen, but before we get any of our improvements on through those. You can kind of see the gallons per minute each well put out. And the dates. The first line, the blue one was two thousand nineteen peak. And if we wouldn't have done any improvements in sixteen, we wouldn't have had enough water to provide that for today's state. And. So, back then, we were able to pump about four hundred sixty gallons a minute total. Over twenty-four hours, that would have gave us point six. Six two million gallons a day, and that is our peak today. So if we wouldn't have made the improvements, our wells would be around twenty-four seven, just to keep track. So currently, after our improvements. We're up to about eight hundred, ten thousand gallons in eighteen hours. And we can deliver about a little over a million gallons if the well's running twenty-four hours. But. Currently, the red line is our current peak, man. And we don't quite meet that. We do meet our eighty percent, which is the average throughout the summer. And we're able to do that. There's some weeks and a few days in there we can't keep up, but. Eventually, it does catch up in the. Eventually it does catch up in a few days later, um. But by the time you knew why it last time, the yellow line is where we gotta be. And I'll let Brian come up and, uh, and go from there.
So, yeah, like you said, the yellow line is where we are anticipated, that was mentioned area estimate for twenty years out, we just projected it at five and ten, that's two numbers, eleven twenty-eight, thirteen ninety. That's five years out and ten years out. Um, so for each of the columns, Kevin did the first two, the third one is if you leave well three. As it is, which is pretty funny, um, the blue one was number four. Um, they are projecting or planning on three hundred fifty gallons a minutes. We believe it'll be more, it's anticipated, we'll probably get five, maybe six hundred out of it, not sure yet, we don't know that till we drill it. But that's just still to see if you're comparing with your best well off, which we're considering. One and two together being the one well off because they're limited and they both have the most ammonia. Which is what we're trying to avoid, so. The difference between number three and three something versus four hundred is not a lot, so we're just. Assuming that one and two will be the sacrificial pair because of the holders also. So if you don't count those. And the anticipated number four, you're still not meeting your. Demand as what DNR is gonna want you to be at, which we just discussed. The next column was if you ended up with your six hundred for your new one and you rehab three, have the whole system equal. You could get to that as based on what the engineer estimate was for well three's capability. But it was really, really expensive to get to that number. So we're not even considering that as being a realistic option because it's gonna be plenty of expensive as it is. And then the next column just shows well four by itself, if you had. If you can't count one and two and you had well failure on the other ones, or if you abandoned one and two and still had three fail for you. Then you're backed down to way, way below where you'd be, then you really got a problem. And the next one after that would be if, uh, you're still not counting one and two, but. Three, four and potential fifth, well number five is if you drilled two wells. Now we're back up to where the DNR. Will meet in the DNR thing, we still got, um. Well, three is in service, you still, um, we're not gonna abandon well one or two anytime soon until we have to, but. To meet the requirements, with the well three, new well four and potential well five, you would be at your. Meeting your daily demand of five years. And then after that, it shows number three, if it was rehab with, with four and five. That you could potentially reach your tenure, but that was expensive option again. And then the next one shows. Well, three and then drawing three wells, what happens in the future, if you did three wells at a conservative. Um. Yield, so to speak, and then the last one just shows if you had one, two and three and the new, if you did two. That would be, you know, meet your ten years also, but you still got problems with one and two with the water quality. Whatnot being part of the system at that point, so. I don't know, that confused in the war, but it helped explain it, I hope, we were trying to, we kind of. Explain with the graphs that you could see where we're at.
I know when we talk numbers, it's really hard to grasp the concept of what we're saying, and so we put it in. Color graph form so you could see. The squares gotta meet the line, if they don't meet the line, you're short on the water, it's simple as that. So we just wanted to break it forward that I. Wasn't a hundred percent sure if you understood it or. You know, the comprehension of all the numbers and what they meant. But I think this was a simpler visual to actually get a point across.
This doesn't help for breakdown of your problem.
And it's not financially feasible based on the number you have on here to rehab well three trying to.
Oh, no, you're talking, you're talking about building a brand new water thing like the one future we're gonna build, you're gonna do two of them at the same time, that's just not feasible.
That was an engineer's estimate, I guess a three million to re-cut that building and put it together. Yeah, that's just rough.
Well, that's every well that was, yeah, I agree.
We all know how accurate those numbers are.
Right, exactly.
So going to your point, Mike, before, you know, we were talking two thousand sixteen about build another well and promoting. You can kind of see that the rehab we did on the wells really was extremely beneficial for the dollars, it got us. That five years further on down the road, but. You know, we need to be thinking still to the future, so.
Does anybody have any more questions for Kevin or Brian? Thank you, guys. Joe, Parks and Recreation.
Joe Calipari, Parks and Recreation Director. Hey, Mike, I got a presentation here, it's about twenty minutes long, but I'm gonna cut it down for you guys, just to save you some time. Any questions on the, uh, update? Alright, there's a, a link that's got a bunch of attachments to it, it's basically, um. The spreadsheet on what it takes to run our red program, our, uh. Private rental program concession, if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. These will tie back into another part that I have coming up later about wages for, uh, part-time help in the summertime. Uh, I do have a job there, I went to March first, uh, for some help this summer. And I don't know if you guys noticed this or not, but I just pointed out that the bid for Hart and the Hite's Hart came in approximately fifty thousand dollars under what we thought it was going to. Just wanted to let you know that, any questions? Any questions? You guys have any questions? Alright.
Engineering Shane, do you have anything that you need to talk about? Um, moving on, Joe with the, uh, following this age of eight.
Alright.
That's how you.
It is, I'm here with the, uh, special Valentine's Day edition of the annual update. However, there's nothing romantic about trash, so it's been pretty standard for quite recent same here. Uh, the agency, uh, quick reminder, we have a four back in nineteen ninety-four when, uh, City of Cedar Rapids and Lynn County combined under a twenty-eight E agreement. We have a nine-member board of directors with, uh, six officials from the City of Cedar Rapids, two Lynn County supervisors, Ben Rogers and Louis Zombach, who's our board chair. Then one appointee from the city of Marion, we operate our two locations. Uh, so if you ever seen site two, mention the newspaper, that's where the landfill and recycling building are on County Home Road. Site one is, uh, Mount Trashmore, the closed landfill, that's not a recreational site, and then site three is our compost facility. So I'll jump right into our, uh, changes coming up here for the next fiscal year on July first. Our garbage tipping fee is going up to forty-five dollars per ton, that's a three dollar increase from the current forty-two. And the minimum charge for all the way goes is gonna be twenty-two dollars plus tax. And then we have flat fees for residents, uh, based on vehicle size, it's gonna be twelve dollars per car load. SUVs, minivans, fifteen dollars per load, and the flat fee for pickups and full-size vans, it's gonna be twenty-two dollars per load. And then we say flat fee, if you come out in a pickup truck and you just have one bag of garbage, you're gonna be charged twenty-two dollars, so I always tell folks in these meetings, please let your constituents know. If you only have like a couple extra bags of garbage, it's probably way cheaper, use your curbside services, I, I know that's a Republican up on the agenda here, so. Whatever Republic charges you for a couple extra bags of garbage, probably use that, services coming out to us, especially from this side of town, you know, it's a half an hour drive. Burning gas, it's gonna cost you at least, you know, twelve dollars if you're in a car, twenty-two in a pickup, so use your curbside services when you can. Yard waste is going up to twenty-eight dollars per ton, that's for our, uh, Mount Trashmore location. And then minimum load, ten dollars, and then commercial recycling is going up to ninety dollars per ton. We get charged a hundred and six when we take it over to, uh, uh, Republic's processing plant over there on Ingleside Drive, but. We, uh, keep, uh, trying to keep it low just so people can do to recycle, uh, we wanna make sure we're diverting as much of the landfill as we can. Things are staying the same with no changes, our recycling services, if you do come out that way, so plastic, cardboard, uh, glass. Paper, that's not go, no charge for Lynn County residents, appliances are staying the same, ten dollars per unit. Scrap metal, there's no charge, but we don't pay for scrap metal, so if you have anything with value, take it to Marion Iron, another, uh, scrapper. Tires staying the same, three dollars per tire, and then batteries and medical sharps, no charge for Lynn County residents, batteries are a big one. We have about two buyers who eat out in batteries, uh, they get run over in the landfill. Our staff moved with to do with it, but it's a big issue, so please recycle those batteries, especially the lithium ones. Uh, TVs, monitors staying the same, TVs are fifteen dollars per unit regardless of size and weight, all other electronics, no charge. You can plug it in, it's not an appliance, we'll take it for free. Uh, and then household materials, this program is remaining no charge for Lynn County residents, so paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners, lawn fertilizer. Anything that you're not sure of, you think might not be safe to throw away, bring it out to us, we'll take it for no charge. Education and outreach, we do have a licensed teacher on staff, tours have resumed, last school was, uh, shown down for a couple of years there because of COVID. They're back up, so try to get everyone out there if they can, look out into schools as well, uh, boy scouts, girl scouts, community groups. So if you have any interest in learning about your origin recycling, give us a call, uh, we can host you or we'll come out to you. Uh, moving on down to Mount Trashmore, uh, Trashmore Trail will reopen later this spring, uh, when weather permits, gotta get those trails dried out, but. A lot of fun if you haven't been down there before, great view, so, uh, we try to keep it open as much as we can, it is a regulated site, so we can't treat it like a park with, uh, access all the time, but. Just check in at our building, nine forty-eight, you check in once, it's, uh, they give you all your information, you're good for the year, so if you haven't, yeah, please come check that out. And then moving on to the compost facility, uh, our compost available for no charge to residents to re-grade nutrient-rich, uh, soil amendment. Take as much as you want if you're a resident, you can come up in the trailer, we'll load you up for free, uh. If you're a business, we charge, uh, landscapers, it'll be twenty-eight dollars per ton. One note about our compost facility, um, we are full down there, capacity's a big issue with us right now because of Duratio. We have more trees there than we can handle, so we have told all the big, uh. You know, excavators, Link Community, they're coming in and putting in new subdivision and then you can clear out thirty-three acres of trees. Um, they can't bring them in, so we just wanted the space for it, now if you're a resident, you just take down like one tree, yeah, we can take that, but. No dump truck loads are big, uh, the earth moving equipment, none of those loads coming anymore, so they need to find a way to use that site, like rent a chipper and then use it there. And I used to always come here and tell you that we have wood chips and they were a great deal, you know, forty dollars per ton. Well, we were not giving away wood chips because we have a big supply of them, so no charge anymore. Um, right now we just have the ones that are going on through our grinder once, they're kind of long and stringy, but later this spring, we will have, uh, uh. Wood chips that have gone through it twice, so that's the stuff that you might want to use for landscaping around the home, that sort of thing. And again, no charge for compost and wood chips for the safe area, if you ever need it. Talking about capacity, our landfill future. We know that we're gonna close at our current location on June thirtieth, twenty forty-four, that's when our settlement agreement with City Marion says that location has to close. Um, we are gonna be full before then at the rate that we're going, Duratio took a couple of years of capacity off of the life of landfill. We're just slowing up even faster than that, so right now, we're looking at probably twenty, thirty-six at current rates, that site is gonna be full. So we're looking at different options about what we can do to prolong life it to make sure that we get to twenty forty-four and what we're gonna do afterwards. So you see on the next slide, you know, we're calling this, uh, Forward Twenty Forty Four, spoke to you about this a little bit last year. That's ongoing because we know that, yeah, we're gonna close June thirtieth, twenty forty-four, come July first, there's still gonna be six to seven hundred tons of garbage that has to go somewhere. So our board is going through the process of, uh, looking at different things that we can divert. One of the big ones that we've worked on in the years ahead here is organic conversion on the next slide, uh, with that maybe anaerobic, uh, anaerobic digestion to get rid of it. Study, stated a big study this past year with eleven landfills across Iowa, we were part of it, metro waste, thirty in Illinois is the biggest, us, Iowa City, the view, and some of the smaller ones. And they separated out into eighty different categories, all the different garbage people have thrown away, so. Pulled out representative samples, went through, actually opened the bags, took all the garbage out, on these different categories. They found that across Iowa, twenty to twenty-five percent of all the garbage, twenty-two percent here in Lynn County, is organic waste, most of that being food waste. So we're gonna look at if there's opportunities that we can, uh, try to pull that material out, because that'll help us save some of the space as we move forward. And then just looking at different things for technologies, what can we do besides landfilling, as you see on the next slide there. One decision our board has made is that there will be no new landfill in Lynn County when the current one closes. Basically, back in early two thousands when we were allowed to expand, um, so many restrictions to put into place. There's just not enough parcels left in Lynn County that we can have apples to apples to what we have right now with the landfill, so. A landfill will still play a part in garbage because at the end of the day, there's some things that can't be reused, they can't be recycled, they can't be composted, they have to go somewhere. So they're just gonna go to a landfill, that landfill won't be in Lynn County. And, uh, in the meantime, what's this mean for Fairfax residents in all of Lynn County? We're still open, we're still here to take material, uh, we want folks to know that we're gonna go through this process, we'll let you know when changes do come up. You know, there, you'll always hear about different technologies. A lot of them are really expensive, we looked at what it would take to build a, a modern, uh, incinerator here in Lynn County, it costs a billion dollars. We would have to import garbage in to make sure that we could run it twenty-four seven, because we just don't generate enough garbage to, uh, support technology like that. So transfer stations will probably be something that we looked at in the future, so the garbage is still coming to a location like our current one. Then when they get put into semis and taken out to a landfill, we accept it. That might mean that they put another transportation on the southwest side of Cedar Rapids, closer to where industry is too. And one in Northern Lynn County for the real residents up that way, so that's a big, uh, possibility, but in the meantime. We're still open, and if there's anything that we can do for the city of Fairfax, let us know, we'll try and do it.
Thanks, Joe, does anybody have any questions for Joe?
No, he answered them all, I, I've already answered mine on the slide, because I know last year it came by, I mean, it's here before, so I'm about Mary about getting closer to the property limits to increase. Overall capacity, it sounds like that's a hard to know.
Yeah, they came back, they said, no, we're gonna stick to, which is alright, it was, it was intuitive and good faith, but, uh, yeah, so. This is something that we're all even more than real.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Um, Republic Services contract extension, Cynthia, where's that?
Yeah, um, Matt apologized, he was not able to come yet, very, you know, speaking. But, um, he did submit this, um, pro- um, proposal that I reviewed, it. It, um, matches his, as his proposal that, um, previously that in council, but I didn't want it to do. You can see that, um, they're proposing a five-year contract, which we discussed. And then he added that the park dumpster will be increased to the Monday, uh, twice a week. Uh, the dumping people through October, I believe those were the only items that we had asked him to change or add in. So then if you, um. Agree with that, then the resolution is to enter into a five-year. Contract extension.
When was the last time the public had?
Well, they, we signed a five-year contract with them, and then they increased it every year, just like they're proposing.
The first five-year contract was roughly like three point five percent or something like that. This time, all they did was, they said something yearly increase, they didn't put a hard number, it's around six percent each. So I assume they're putting this five-year contract into, uh, six percent increase to. Count for inflation and fuel costs, if they did it personally, they'd go to David and Schwartz and feature. Well, this earlier, Cynthia, what will be looking at to continue being roughly about a ton or five, like this for here?
For our.
Hard charge to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, just a little bit. Um, I.
You saw it earlier.
Proposal, I might have missed on.
We had the agreement.
So. Yeah, I'm proposing that we go to twenty-one, uh, in red, um. There's, yeah, so whatever that. Because right now the difference is seventeen, twenty-five, fifteen, ninety-three. I don't have that.
Discussion now? You guys want to keep it about a dollar thirty or a dollar a bucking quarter above? What aren't charged for this, this broken charge? Listen to Ray's.
Well, and this doesn't set that, this just.
I'm just saying.
I think we need to, uh, Cynthia, just because we have expenses in house to. Yeah, but right now the garbage fund is not covering its expenses. Um, it's in them, it's negative right now, it's projected to be more negative come the end of June, but. So you could go more, you could leave it at what we're suggesting, you could supplement it with. You know, general loss or whatever, we could stop paying some of the salaries out of it if you want, but, I mean, it. It should be, yeah, you know, it should be charged for safeties. Salaries.
I'll move to a separate, uh, special report then.
I have a second.
Sorry.
Hold on, please.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. June six, you, uh, can we do anything with more pricing?
It's later on the agenda, it isn't, or then it's
Public screen regarding, um, this player twenty-four max levy.
Okay, so, um, I hope everybody's got informed of this, but this is what we originally worked out to, you know, stay at the eight-ten. Remember our, um, taxable valuation went down a little bit because we're using more for tip. So this is actually showing a decrease in the, um, total dollars. And this max levy is to focus on the total dollars. Um, and, uh, so we're closing, stay at the eight-ten. You have to have a hearing on it before you proceed with your budget process now. Remember hearing that the state did the wrong calculations for the taxable evaluations. So the, um, Senate has already approved change in it and, um, sending out new taxable evaluations and giving us an extra month for the lifelines or budget. The House is still discussing it, they haven't taken action, it came out of committee the end of last week, but they have taken action this week. So, not knowing if our timeline is going to be extended, we should proceed and do our regular budget sales. In two weeks, we might find out that this amount is going down, but there's nothing we can do, we have to take this step, we'll get to the next.
That's the difference for a lot of forty, some, uh,
About forty-one, some, if my calculations were accurate.
Fortunately, the parks did came under fifty thousand.
Well, fortunately, I found somewhere for that fifty thousand.
So does anybody have questions on, you know, either just this max levy or that property tax?
Well, moving forward, I read the stuff on that SB file where um, is that something we have, I know you guys were talking about it earlier, and I read through it a couple of times and I'm still like trying to break my head. Is that something that we're, we can't be changing in the future, and I know the growth thing is cap, which hurts us, but
So there, there's kind of two things right now. The most immediate is this adjustment, and it's a separate action, you know, and the league is expecting them to eventually pass it. So all those other proposals for the, uh, property tax, they're still, they haven't passed either branch of the legislators yet, so yes, I think all cities should give input to try to get that modified somehow, I just kind of tried to highlight, you know, the things that I saw. The not letting us capitalize on our growth. I, I think is so short, short sighted, um, you know, it's almost penalizing us because we're at the eight-ten now. Um, now if they go through with it as suggested, well, I was telling Mary Ann, you know, I was trying to think of the different ways that we could try to, um, capitalize in, uh, some more funds, well the debt service isn't included in any of that discussion, and you know, we currently don't have a debt service funding, we have lots of loans to qualify. We've just chosen not to. Um, if the city got to the point where they really needed to generate because the three and a half percent cap isn't enough on the power. Um, we could start to do that, it would raise everybody's levy. But, you know, you get to a, a tipping point where they're not paying attention to what's happening on these gross cities. There's going to have to be some sort of solution. As you add more streets and more residents, there's more expenses, there's more services, there's, you know, more of everything, it's just like, um, they're just focused on that total of tax dollars, not yay for us staying at eight-ten, let us capture that growth. Unfortunately. I did reach out to legislators, I've never done that before, but I did, whether they read it or pay attention to it, I don't know, but I encourage you all to, to do that, give some input. Questions for me? Oh, I guess I didn't go through the other changes, so there's proposing to, uh, the geo-debt limit, take down thirty percent. They're proposing some of the, uh, like homestead exemption, exemption, some of those things that they backfill to us now, just stop. They're proposing the six percent wet tax that they put in place and half of it's supposed to go to the drinking quality fund, they're going to stop putting money in that, just all goes to their general fund. They're proposing to take, restructure the local election sales tax. Change the, in the entire state, the sales tax is seven percent. And then give back the city, to the cities, the one percent. And so even counties that hadn't voted for the local election sales tax, there's, their residents and visitors are going to be charged a seven now. And the, um, different entities will get back if they, since she gets back. I can tell you that you get more than two city clerks in the room when we talk about, you know, all the different times you think, promise that, okay, we'll backfill, you know, we'll give you this back, and then it just disappears. You know, and really, uh, the local residents in those counties that didn't prove it evidently their voices, you know, because they're going to impose it statewide. It's just
Which is a huge deal with the revenue stream, I mean, the line, how long would go, if it goes away, you'd just be like
Well, it's a double win, maybe your, your artificial cap into the growth, which allows you to assist to serve on some of that, but they seem to be doing it. Basically crushing many communities that is honestly, like ours, where you're transitioning from, from like that real small town to a larger community, and we need those projects. See if we can retain those.
Yeah, you have more water, but you can't borrow, you know, so we make those improvements, maybe the Julie. It's just, yeah, we talked about where, where at the eight-ten, we might have to increase that, just
Because you can't, did I say you can't go of your, I'm just really, once you're at eight-ten?
Yeah, and, and again, your general left, but if you add a debt service, that's not included in that solution. So really, your total levy would go up, but you would be having money in the property tax money to pay the debt rather than out of your eight-ten. You know, that, that's a solution, but in my opinion, not a good one. You know, they let us capture our growth, hopefully we could stay at the eight-ten. And nobody would see a property tax increase from the city levy unless they're, uh, property value, you know, um, and the new people coming on would then be contributing their eight-ten, you know, on that valuation, which they should, it's just, it just seems so simple to me, so.
Well, and they're going to, you know, to, to get the multifamily poll back there, that's what's pushing that, we, people have letters starting today that's saying that property taxes are going to go up twenty percent, you know, it's twenty-two, to cover that.
Oh, and they're also, um,
To cover that shortfall that they're anticipating.
Yeah.
I didn't like, I didn't like that.
They're also, uh, proposing to lower the commercial investment rollback, you know, it's at ninety now. And they're talking about phasing it down to eight, but like five years. I, you know, I was talking to Mary Ann, you know, all those things affect school systems, counties, cities, uh, those treasurer balance. If the state wants to say to the residents, hey, we cut your taxes, lower the income taxes, start taking money from their but they, all we do is have to back.
So we need some public hearing for this max levy.
Okay, so I'm having to close it. So no, you, you had, you're having the public hearing on, and the max will be right now, so it was, but he's done. We didn't receive any questions at city halls, anybody here?
Say, anybody have anything to contribute, guys? And then let's close the public hearing. Um, the motion to consider resolution to approve this, we're trying to make a slide, the motion of second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hi, I continue, I can type.
I Consider resolution to set upon a hearing date for the fifth year twenty-four budgets.
Yeah, and so, uh, this is going through our regular schedule to set in it for March fourteenth. Because as far as I know, it is a hassle, houses to extend the deadlines.
I will, I will comment that.
Oh, yeah, and are you?
I am, yeah.
Oh, you are, so I didn't know if we wanted to pick a new date, because I thought you were going to be done, I mean, but Tom's going to be done, uh. And if we do, I just need to know it now, because I'll change the date in this and change the date in the budget hearing.
And with everything else going on down the line, but, because we get further down the agenda, impact that as well, too. I go for, for, for March fourteenth?
Yeah, March fourteenth is the regular date, that's what's going to be done, it would be back the following week.
I don't need a week before, I mean, if
Okay.
I'm just awkward, like, I won't be able to attend that week.
Do you have enough, is there enough time, if we did a week at a time for the public hearing dates?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Week before, after, I don't care.
Cynthia, is that March, is that what they're talking about?
Yeah.
That's a special, that's a school board election.
Oh, exactly. Okay, they'll be up here. Thank you. So you want to go first? That's fine, is everybody else available for twenty-first, I want to change it into somebody else, I'm nailed.
Are you talking to me regularly?
Yeah.
We, when riot that especially, we didn't make a, put ready, water tower, bin, letting and buy water, and so, we, we were planning that we did in March fourteen, we didn't go back, we didn't, we submitted, we, we won't have that special, and we, we, we'll pack that, we'll, we'll
Or move the April date, if you do. I don't care, I can make whatever work, but it's, it's
Well, in that group, probably more about week before.
That's the election.
What about, I mean, obviously it's going on now, too, that you're throwing out options.
Oh, you mean you have to be, you know, it's Monday, the eighth, hot stuff.
Then it makes no difference, I mean.
Yeah.
Me neither.
Well, better than other.
Wednesday, eight?
Leaving that.
Let me listen. Uh, do you have any problem moving the April one week also then, for the project?
It's a Actually, I might be, I So we'll figure that out, email.
Eight? Shoot me.
I actually have to switch.
Yeah, that's what I think. Well, who doesn't know?
I don't know, I I was asking moving these to one of our, picture, as a state legislator, and he's, and he's I think they're different.
Do you want to some of March, Wednesday, March eighth, or choose a March twenty?
Twenty-first, I presume, you did, but it was something like
Right, you have to do the April ones.
About nine? March. Or we just do the twenty-first? What says we move, and then we bring you, bring you, it's not going to happen this year. Or we, we can't, we can't pay your bill for this?
So you're going to go March fourteen, plan on April, everybody check their schedules for, would it be the eighteen? The eleven is supposed to be the regular. And if we need to go back to the April eleven, then we do have to have a special. What did I say? March, what, March eight? I thought it was twenty-fourth.
Some later on, we're
March twenty-fourth or April? Yes.
You do it, it's text.
Okay, so then this resolution will need reworded to read March twenty-first.
Change your opponent?
Yes, resolution, well, nobody's saying a motion, that's our version of that.
I am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hi, hi. All right.
Um, so, I just looked, people, you can, you can do it, you can count it. It's more, all right.
Well, the only thing we're setting is noon tonight is the point.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to be up teaching, we'll be counting, especially where he doesn't have in March.
Yeah, everybody check your schedule, let me know by, on this local cycle, June, the eleven. Well, do you need to know tonight, Shane, or?
No, we just, the earliest, we need to, one, the special, we do that, uh, one week, or, or one, so there's, there's
Well, the earliest would be the eleven, be the residence.
We'll do March twenty-first, we can, we're ready, we'll do it.
Then the special, okay, great.
So do we need a motion to check, probably revise the revised tax, let me
No. No, because we don't know about that, so I, I'm recommending you don't, I was hoping to hear about it. Uh, I would recommend you take, imagine.
Thank you, Ashley. Consider resolution to approve revised final plan was, uh, he's second, dishima, two, and one, three.
Is there anything particular you want me to open, either Chris or Shane?
Yeah, this is the, uh, final flat, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and, uh, the next one down, you know, so Sopaskis are doing an addition, I think, for their import facilities, and, uh, building addition crosses all the, uh, property lines, meaning the existing lot, so should they are, should we revise final plan, adjusting the easements to accommodate revision? Should we look at this? And, uh, recommend approval of the final plan for Sopaskis third edition. What's that? This one, actions. We just really need to be for because of the use, it's pretty big, pretty big, I was working, okay. You start getting name bears in, but so I don't want to just kind of blow it out, so I'm not, but, but you chose to turn it on.
Do you have any motion?
Motion.
You're so good. Roll call, please.
Hi.
I agree.
Hi.
Hi. Consider resolution to approve your site kind of improvements proposal. For the proposed improvements, a lot of one shots, it's very soon, it's going to
Yeah, so this is the site plan. The proposed condition, they just need to get some, getting death signs up there, making sure it's adjusted. So there's two more conditions, and we can file that for proposed conditions, we recommend for one.
Say motion based. On that, you'll be recommendations to all. Sir.
Roll call please.
I.
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 I. I. Consider commercial building, current application for one fourteen miles, golden.
So let me give you a little background on this, because of the, uh, total investment motion tomorrow, Mayor Pro Tem on the first one we discussed. Uh, to start off with this. This was presented to me, originally, in the roll call from Zach, in the middle of February, but he's already got approval for this, because his original building footprint was approved by council, he doesn't even have to send this to council. I said, well, I think you do, because your building outside footprint of the original. And so, I think he talked to Ariane, I guess, he, he got submittal, beyond the submittal deadline. He told me, I really gotta get this going, because of dates, whatever. Don't send it to Shane, well, it's nice, but it has to go to Shane, he's engineering, he's, uh, so I sent it to Shane. Shane did some calculations, but found out the building doesn't fit up a lot, as proposed. That's why you're looking at a final flat, to adjust a lot of it. Secondly, this original building was built in two thousand nineteen, brand new building. We did an addition in twenty one, we did an addition in twenty two, now this is a fourth addition in twenty three. I bring this to your attention for this four plan. Exactly what this is, and that's why the city needs a public break on some of this stuff. That's what you're creating here for, so. I told Zach various times, I don't work for EIB, I work for the city, I'm gonna do what's best for the city, period. He doesn't like that response, I have the original site plan, and then showing you Zach's drawing, hand drawn. Uh, if you wanna see it, you're more than welcome to it, what I'm gonna ask the city from here forward is, we do not accept hand drawn site plans for commercial or industrial sites. Residential, that's fine, I'm talking a little lots, I can do that now. These are big lots, lots of easements, lots of engineering things to look at. Uh, I don't should have qualified to go through that Shane file, to say, on Zach's part, we still put it on Council General for, this month, we should know. We pushed it, we should have pushed it in March. When we give them those exceptions to the rules, it's expected from there forward, and that's what we're dealing with, unBushment. And I'm honestly sick of it. I used to have Bernie to go do all these things, he's not there anymore. And it makes my job incredibly difficult. I spent this morning on Eagleview Drive, listening to the owner of dugout sports tell me how the city's responsible to get in there and get that road fixed. Up to grade, we're collecting his tax dollars, he's entitled to all this stuff, and again, I sent it to Zach, he did it, and not me. I'm tired of taking this stuff. So if the council chooses to start throwing stuff up willy nilly, wherever they feel EIB needs to work next, do it. But let me know, because I don't want a problem.
Thank you.
Zach now has this corrected, to where he's added two fire escape exits, which he told me he didn't need, they're on there now, I recommend you go in and proof this.
Chris, can I ask a question? These are still green space requirements?
Ten percent.
They still meet the green space requirement, we can't see it anymore.
On this one? Yeah, most of it's up in the ditch along the front, but yes, I think.
Thank you.
So is that not this, Chris, moving forward, you prefer them, this building, where you're giving, it's one long term plan, we're talking about. A long term plan, where they can do it in stages, instead of just coming, to, you know, throw on, you know, another core simulator rooms, or something like that.
My suggestion is, council, don't accept plans that aren't for what they're building today. No future buildings, no footprint that shows preapproval for down the road, that's craziness. If you wanna build a building, or put on an addition to a building, show us that, and only that. Because the plans over there change by the hour. That I can't keep up with it, right? When I came here, I thought maybe a review process wasn't what it says, if you've been dealing with it for six years, I, I really haven't. My interest is with city, on during the city. Uh, well, yeah, he's getting a little question.
Chris, you do understand, when you put that building up, they put in a golf simulator, and it took off and did extremely well, so they added another one, because it's good business sense, and then they added another one, that, that wasn't out there until that, we gave you the initial drawings, just, so just make it.
They didn't build.
I know, it was making that clear, it's just good business sense to add more, you know. Doing good business.
I'm not a fan of. I'm, I'm all for commercial business, obviously, Fairfax being a bit industrial, commercial, but we talked about Bushmets earlier, and, and now we talk about this area again, that if we have steps in place, processes in place. Subski had done a lot of Fairfax, and him, versus, but. I, I, I stand next to Chris, with what you say, they know what the requirements are, and they're like, for us, in mind, and need for us to make exceptions. Want to do one time, if that's all people remember. And I'll use this example of Subski, and then all of a sudden, now we're on record with everything, it's taught to be black and white, but. We're here talking about this right now, because of. A career, right? I've been in there, I've played golf in there many times, I like it. I'm, hey, it's more business, but you gotta go through the steps, and when, whatever those, the comments are of common sense rules. There's also process, steps that, that they know, and I'm. They wanna build their building at Bushmets, and they just came to us way back, so they can get it. And then this again, makes me stand more firm, this is our process, this is what we gotta do. That's the part where it's obviously, what's that, this happens every year, every year. And we'll be, that will be, that will be. Unstamped drawings, you'll get that later. Then we'll move, we'll move, wanting to get it.
Only the same thing, I think the final one, we actually had about forty on Friday morning, I'm supposed to be up since it, I think, the Thursday.
That's how it's planned.
Lack of preparation, that hurts, long time, the lack of preparation on someone's part, not constitute an emergency, on our, right? And that's what sounds like we've had another, we're starting to, I'm sorry, people may not like that, but I screw up too, and hey, I'll learn from it.
So paperwork's not completed.
This one is.
Uh, this, this one he recommended, but it is, his recommendation is no footprints missing forward, and.
Well, we should.
We have to treat, the real, the reality is, we have to treat everybody, you can't push something through, so if the deadline is Thursday, and he submitted it Friday, well, then we'll put it in March for this exception.
Well, it should be, we need to give our deadlines to, since, like I said, we need final, true, we can go to, you've gone through the process, and you should have.
And if that needs to be, like I said, to give everybody proper time to review it.
And our submittal schedules are on, what's, they're well aware of, and if they follow the submittal schedules, then we don't have any problem, we can lose agenda, obviously, they give it to us, you know, way advanced. Engineer, ready, you know, ready, I mean, when, you know, Chris said, don't accept any of the handwritten stuff, I'm not involved in this, but I know that Chris's time, and Shane's time, you know, when they get something that's above standard submitted, costs the fish more, you know.
You, you, I just, anytime they had to reset, get something that was, you know, tiny.
Well, we changed that.
We've never seen.
I, I know we passed them.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Four, that's what we had, forty five years ago, I can't like, I mean, it's, you're both submitted course. Curious if we're actually a little bit.
I think we should.
But then the other side of that is, how much you mean with something that, like, you just submit something, and then they say, well, you need to add this and this and this, so then you go back to your engineer to add this and this and this, and you resubmit. Things go back and forth, try and get what the information that people need, then are you gonna charge them?
The question is, I don't have a charge of discretion, with their discretion areas, if we add things we want, that they wouldn't, like, or they're thought of, I think that, there's obvious things that's not doing, like, with standardize or whatever, um, if they're doing things like that, I mean.
It's a customer.
Well, I think that.
If you need this, the building doesn't fit up a lot, it's no shade draw, so then, if it's upset, then the engineer, sure enough, we're moving along. That's the flushing part.
And I think most of the time, the back and forth, it's, the city is, I mean, common sense has got to fit on a lot, or it's SUDAS standards, or whatever, it's stuff that they should know, it's that initial to middle so many times is not correct, and not complete, they haven't done their homework, checked. Everything out. It's not the city.
So this job, this goes back to that, so we're just going for the whole buildings on the property that this person owns, and then they submit something, and when they get, they get told, okay, it's gotta be SUDAS, you're gonna have to run water, you're gonna have to run sewer, now you're gonna have to run the fire hydrant in, so that has to go back to their engineer, and that's what has to go back on it, which, my understanding is, he didn't do, he just kinda hand drew something on there, say, this is where it's gonna go, and then resubmitted it. And, and so to Chris's point, it does go back and forth.
But they know.
And I'm, they should probably, they should probably know better.
If that's the example.
But there's, but there's other people that would not know that.
If that's the example, uh, I'm guessing they would give something again, it is their responsibility, in addition to their engineer's responsibility, or the required, was needed on the submit, submitting scheme.
It's still about the SUDAS, and.
That, that's why I told them that they needed to have everything to SUDAS, because that's where.
I think it would be best, honestly, Mary Ann, if you didn't answer questions for them. Cut off that line of communication, lead it to engineering, to building department.
Well, I thought they had to do it to SUDAS, and so.
Two seconds, looking at it, I can tell you.
We don't believe in the algorithms.
I don't know.
Let's get back to this one.
I'm just, I don't get along, it's a long list of stuff.
So, based on Chris's recommendation, this. Motion. Go.
Second. So, roll call please.
I.
I.
I. Consider resolution to amend the agreement with Pelo for building Park and Services, Chris.
Uh, this is a weakness.
Yeah, um, so when, uh, uh, you know, we haven't agreed with Pelo for business services, and anytime that, uh, we bump payroll, we redo this, um, agreement with them, so that they're covering Chris's, um, hourly. City contributions, so if I can, so, um, I think the, the hourly that we're charging them, so we have to pay them. So that, that's all, that's the only thing changing, when the, uh, federal mildly trade changes, that's just written in, it will follow the federal, so we. None of the other, uh, services that we are providing is changing just the way, and they're well aware, they've already got it.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
I.
I.
I. Consider ordinance A two, and ordinance one, Fairfax, or ordinance in two thousand seventeen, city of Fairfax, I, I can use.
Sir.
One fifty three building problems.
Uh, so this comes back to, when I used to build here in Fairfax, before I retired from that, I was always told by Dave, you can't build a two by four house, Fairfax, first year was. Uh, as you may already know, D R Horton's local now, he's in Baylo, he's in Sierra Rapids, and that's what they use, a two by four home wall. Uh, since the development started in Baylo, there's been lots of complaints from the residents, so I went into our books to find the two by six wall ordinance, and it doesn't exist, I put it in front of you now.
Is there an R by U ordinance?
Well, that's in the energy code, it's gotta be twenty, and home wall does make the, the energy code, that's, so the, the home wall makes code, but if you guys don't want Fairfax, if you don't want E, or if you're ordered Fairfax.
You gotta use wind racing, and backwards, everything, and it's.
It's, it's not gonna build in fact.
Have you been, have you been, um, inspecting everything, um, based on thinking it was two by six?
No, no, I've never had anyone submit a two by four.
Wall.
Plan in Fairfax.
I thought it was two by two.
Yeah, I was always told as a builder, well, it doesn't exist, so I'm putting it in front of you now, if you wanna do it, do it, if you don't, don't, but, uh, cables behind the meatball, they wanna do this, but it's, it's too late to do it, for them.
And then what was that, the interesting, we should have, this now, and they're all ready for it.
Well, if you can get around, you have to have them R values, what do you have, R eleven or something, for two by four walls, and you can put the home board on the outside to get that two by six.
Right, the home bar gives you, uh, a six.
Six.
Addition, with the R thirteen installation, then you get one for your problem, which brings you to R twenty, which is what's required by the high energy code.
So there's no pilot announcement, house, I mean, you could put pilot, I don't know, they, they cut, they cut strips along the studs to keep the building ready.
That's cheap ass.
Wind racing, the strongest part of the wall is the drive, and you've all broken your drive, I'm sure.
Roll call please.
I.
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 I. I'm. It's the actual deals.
Motion will play, uh, the first reading, or second, whichever reading we're on.
Is there, is there any permits in the White House?
No, not a Fairfax, so, well, I'm, they're, but you know, I was only sure.
Nice catch.
Roll call please.
I.
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 I. Into the motion, final passes.
Motion.
Second. Roll call please.
I.
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 I. Consider ordinance A, you put in ordinance running effects, kind of ordinance since in two thousand seventeen, city of effects, Iowa, by running chapter one, this collection, spotlight, please.
So this is where, uh, considering increasing your, uh, outreach rate, and it's, uh, written thirty twenty one, and it's written to take effect June tenth, like, last year was, so that on that June thirtieth bill, that we collect in July, with this full year, uh, the new rate, we can do that.
In, let's see, you said that, well, regulation, that's one, regulation, so this is where you've got, the box earlier, or?
What do you say, dollar thirty?
The, the whole one, they say dollar thirty, I think, set, the closing words.
So what's the difference between twenty one and nineteen?
Gosh, yes.
Okay, so that's what we're proposing.
Well, and.
That's a little bit.
I could, I get your, part of the little poster.
Well, I mean, it's a little bit more.
You give a less.
Yes.
Shall we, you want to speak for this?
No, I'm.
No, he's just super slow, so he's getting up there.
Okay, I just want to.
Just trying, just trying to help you guys out a little bit.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So is twenty one adding? What do you think? I mean, you said this one is negative. I mean, that gets us to the positive, moving towards the positive side. I want to keep these as low as possible.
That, yeah, um, I guess, um, you know, there's three different things we can do. We could raise this higher. You could, um, see where it's at the end of this fiscal year, the end of next fiscal year and transfer from law or general to take it. We, or you can have us not take as many expenses out. Uh, I guess I would prefer uh, transferring if we need to. So that we know actually what it should be and then, and, you know, a year from now, if you decide to raise it a little bit more than theirs. You know, I would rather do it incrementally than big jump, but that's.
Yeah, I'm part of the twenty one, when the next year raise comes up, they will kind of.
Yeah, and maybe increment a little bit. And then if you need to transfer, you know, I would recommend that you do that rather than us shift expenses. And that gives, uh, one, it affects some others. And it gives an unrealistic expectation for your targets, you know. I, I think we should charge everything that we should, so that you see where it's at.
I know twenty one sounds like a big jump, but it's losers involved for twenty eight.
How's that going for you? And remember, you know, the twenty one, we're at seventeen twenty five. So that's why I'm not really, I would recommend that you go to twenty. Now, first year is kind of a shock.
And in Fairfax, you just all be kind of late now, or you even say something in there. I have a lot of people say about. Again, sitting there about Walrus, shot, shot at community, that'll help. I would get a bench, a surrounding rates, because I mean, yeah, there are fixed income people, or a lot doesn't sound like a lot, but some people have jumped in about forty eight dollars a year. A lot of some people at the same time, Johnson. Now, in record, who originally was doing it all, just guarding Walrus, twenty eightish cabinet for some time. Been to high siege, so that would be important. If it's happened, I want to talk right there. Oh, my motion. Either it's, such a garbage. Second.
Roll call please.
I, I. I.
Consider motion, please, Ben Rose.
Motion.
Second.
Two.
Second.
Roll call please.
I, I. I.
I.
You can wait, you can wait, you can wait, you can wait, my mind. We want to wait until the last reading for that, so in case anybody wants to watch any of them. Um, deep there.
Discussion possible motion concerning suggested, suggested payroll is the part we browse.
Okay, there's two links there. First one, uh, is my recommendation for the increase and how it will affect payroll at the park. Currently, uh, nine dollars and fifty cents is our highest concession worker. Twelve fifty is our grounds crew, highest grounds crew. Fourteen dollars is our concession manager. And, uh, Rosie's making fifteen dollars an hour. My recommendation is for eleven fifty an hour concession, thirteen fifty and grounds crew. Fourteen to those that are eighteen and over and can drive. Concession manager of fifteen and Rosie to sixteen fifty. You can see the numbers there and how it affects, uh, payroll. The next link is how it will affect the concession stand for the year with, uh, the city taking on all of the concession work, not just, uh, the outsides. Right there, it is. Not just the private leagues and private, uh, tournaments. Does everyone have a chance to look at those? Does anyone have any questions for me?
How did you come up with eleven fifty for concession when you felt that was comfortable or?
That's, that's what I'm comfortable with right now. I'll be honest, I'm not sure that that's the right figure. I'm not sure that that's high enough. Right now, um, these kids can walk into a Taco Bell or to a Burger King and make thirteen dollars an hour right off the bat. They have any experience, it's more than that. Menards is paying high school kids nineteen dollars an hour to start. So I've gotta be able to pay them a little bit. When we first started this in two thousand twenty, it was kind of novel to have kids that lived in Fairfax have a place to go work where their parents felt comfortable with, with their supervisor was comfortable with what they were doing, comfortable where they were at. After two or three years old, these kids have experience now. They can go to the Taco Bells and to the Burger Kings. Because they have cash register experience, they have customer service experience. And I don't want to lose those kids because they're, they're chasing, you know, three, four, five extra dollars. So I'm not sure the eleven fifty is absolutely right. I think we'll find out, um, as we go along. Starting to hire people. And I think kids are coming back in the fourth year. I think you gotta adjust that a little bit too. But those will be conversations that I have with those kids that come in. I don't think that it goes to thirteen, but I think a twelve dollar an hour, we may see that in concessions, yeah. What other question?
How motion for payroll rates with the other?
Also. Roll call please.
I, I can guess.
I.
All right, the other ways that is on there, uh, if you guys didn't catch it is for an assistant parks and rec director. And I've got that paid at eighteen dollars an hour. And that is in the budget that I've submitted for twenty three, twenty four. And I think that's where we start with somebody. Again, I don't know if that's actually where we end up at, but I think that's where we start with somebody. What I presented to you here is all the programs that Parks and Rec Director or Parks and Rec Department is responsible for, uh, throughout the year. In addition to that, I have the, uh, opportunity to talk with Solen today. Solen has had a Parks and Rec Department since two thousand eighteen, one year prior to us having one. When they started their Parks and Rec, uh, apartment, they hired a part-time assistant right off the bat. So they started with, uh, the director and an assistant. The reason that we talked today is because they are now hiring their third Parks and Rec Director since two thousand eighteen. They just can't keep them to, to stay. Also with that conversation, I found out that West Branch, uh, has a, an assistant. Edley has an assistant, and all of those towns are about the same size as we are. But I don't believe all of those towns are as active in the Parks and Rec as I am. And it's just time, I think, to, to bring on some help for that. And at the very end of this, you'll see that I've also mentioned a succession, uh, beginning that succession plan. Uh, you know, if I was hit by a bus tomorrow, what happens? What happens to the Parks and Rec Department? And if, don't, I'll think about it, Mike. I'll think about it. Uh, so anyway.
Russ, like how much are you thinking? I was looking for the number here earlier, uh, cutting down on overtime. I know you work.
Well.
I'm not saying that's a negative. I'm just looking about how much roughly are you thinking that's gonna cut down on your overtime?
Well, by hiring one, uh, concession manager last year, I cut down on thirty hours. I went from a hundred and seventy six, and those figures are in the, uh, attachments that were in my report. I went from a hundred and seventy six hours down to a hundred and forty eight hours, just roughly thirty hours that I was down in overtime. You know, the goal of always has been to get down to zero overtime. I just don't know if that's, uh, reality. There's so much that goes on in the course of the summer. Now, in the winter time, it's easy for me to cut down on that. But, uh, summertime is a little more difficult. There's just so much happening at all of the parks. You know, we've got, uh, uh, and again, you'll see in this one, but we have twenty four acres of parks that uh, the Parks and Rec Director is responsible for with the help of the maintenance department. I certainly wouldn't tell you that I do that all by myself. But we do, uh, try to take as much off the plate on the maintenance department as we can. Uh, in the summertime, we have twenty four acres of parks. We have over five miles of walking and biking trails. Plus, we have a new park coming in next summer or this summer. So like, what I would tell is, I hope I'm down another thirty hours. I don't know if that'll happen, but I hope I am down another thirty. That one thing Solen told me today is they are also losing their assistant, um, because they're under third Parks and Rec Director since two thousand eighteen. She feels like all she does is train. Train her dogs.
Is this assistant would be year round or just in the summer?
Year round, no, it'd be year round. Uh, and I think that's, I think that's the way you have to go with this, because you want some stability in that assistant position. And, uh, and again, you start that succession plan uh, with somebody, and maybe the first one you hire isn't the one that you really want to bring on board to eventually take my spot. But that first one definitely is gonna give us an idea of what we did right in hiring process, what we may have missed in hiring process. And, uh, and kind of go from there.
And you're looking at about twenty hours a week.
Twen- eighteen hours, twenty hours a week is what I'm figuring right. Now, in the winter time, that could drop down to seventeen, eighteen hours a week, and in the summertime, that could go up to twenty two, twenty three hours. Uh, but that's average.
Give me an idea of what you're, they would do and where, I mean.
Oh, there's, right now, there's all kinds of things that we're doing. Uh, prior to, let's say, November, I was redoing all of our agreements that we have with our outside organizations that come in and, uh, rent our fields. All of those have to be updated. All of the websites are being updated. Once, uh, January got here, February got here, actually a little bit before the first February, we started, uh, signups for all the sports. And that's not just the youth sports, but that's also the adult sport, like football, that sort of thing. There's, uh, meetings that I have, the Iowa Valley, um, which is the baseball softball league that we are in with our rec program. I'm actually on the board of that rec, uh, league. I'm the commissioner of the baseball side of the Iowa Valley. I'm also the president of a high school rec league that we play in. Uh, then of course, the team ball and, uh, machine pitch we do. Which is in partnership with Walrus. So there's another, uh, relationship that constantly has to be ta- you know, molded, it has to be taken care of, it has to be supervised. So.
Well, without Tina's helping you, right?
No, Tina's not helping me with that. No, Tina's not helping you. Tina does help me with something. She is staff assistant, or not staff assistant, but she is staff support that I need. Just like if I need something, I can go to Cynthia, she helps me. If I need something else, Stacy.
Obviously, I don't know the details of your department. I'm not gonna claim I do. I would think as far as what you have to do from April until August is this much, and that's for the bulk of it, would be for this potential assistant. You know, if winter is, there's some stuff, I can see that, but I also think, are you gonna find someone when it's kind of spotting good winter?
Well, the, the winter time is actually, um, as active as the summertime is, but it's just not outside.
Yeah, paperwork.
Yeah, it's paperwork, it's, uh, uh, maybe, um, the relationships, hanging on back and making sure that you have good relationships, talking with U triple S A baseball. What are we gonna do this year? How does Fairfax fit into your program? Here's like an agreement. Um, review and see if there needs to be any, uh, uh, fee updates like we did have in our sports programs this year. Uh, there's, there's work all the time. It's not, uh, it's not difficult to get to forty hours for me right now. And Cynthia will tell you, I'm still not probably completely caught up with some of the things that I over. The, uh, fax, you know, we have every month, we probably have six or seven items that go into the fax. All of that stuff has to be created and put in there. Uh, the Parks and Rec or Parks and规划ation Committee, I do that agenda. Once a month, I have to get that prepared form, so there's, there's a lot of stuff to do in the winter time.
Oh, you have your activity day, your speaker series, your music.
Correct. So our speaker series, for example, we had our first speaker series for our, our open activity club in December. And that went so well that I actually had people call me to be part of that speaker series. And we thought we were gonna go every third month. And we actually have a speaker every month until July. So we have some people from, uh, Lynn Cameron that are gonna come in and talk about preparedness, how do you prepare for disasters? We have, uh, Mike Nemus, who is Fairfax Music. He's gonna come in and speak about, uh, you know, what music does to your brain and how to keep it cognitive and teach you active. There's just all kinds of things that go on. What other question?
Where would you have this person? Do you share your office with them? Some, what were you thinking?
No, uh, part of the budget proposal is to relocate my office over into the conference room. And then this person would take my office.
Could we get the small one here, where? Bessie, use that much?
We use it quite a bit, but I mean, that doesn't mean we can't just come up here. We just, it's just easier right there, but this room is almost always available.
Business hours?
Yes.
You know, I did pull the, uh, uh, job description off of Solen's website, paired it to the list that I prepared. And there's some, everything in their job description is on this list plus. And so probably half of the stuff that's in there, or that's on this, it's also in their job description. Half of the stuff on my list is not considered part of this job description. I will tell you one thing that is on your job description that's not on mine, is there required, uh, pop stuff? Lynn.
I'm not holding the range of the grid.
I don't think Lynn's got a lot of you, a lot of just small class. You let me have a vent rack for one year and you took me out of that.
What's what you guys think? I guess that was my concern when I called this was, um, you know, we, you do a lot of work and things like that during the winter and it keeps you busy, but do you think you wouldn't have enough to keep another person relieved for that same amount? That was my.
Whole part time job, right, too?
Yeah. So I looked at.
Absolutely.
I, I guess, I think that's probably what the word is concerned was, I think during the summer, you could see easily where you could, you could use help. I think you're trying to wrap our heads around what would this person do during the winter?
So a couple of things that I'll address on that. Number one, uh, the winter time is the only time for me to take vacation. It's the only time I do take vacation. Because it's not summer and, uh, it's not required to be at the park as often. Uh, so that person can definitely come in handy, uh, keeping up with some of the paperwork, keeping up with some of the um, if information needed to get to Cynthia for city council meetings and for the website, that's another thing that I spend a lot of time on in the winter time, is updating the website. But the website gets updated as I get to it. So there's still holes in that right now. Um, and a- again, we do as much work in the winter time as we do in the summertime. The summertime is just visible. You guys see me in the parks in the summertime, you see me riding around in a truck in the summertime. You don't see me in the winter time because everything I do is inside. But that person is definitely needed in the winter time. And again, I go back to uh, the three other towns that I talked about that also have that position. That have less responsibility than I take on right now as the director. And if you look at the things that I, it's not just what I inherited to start, but the things that we started and continue to develop and continue to grow. And that's the other thing that that person allows us to do is continue, continue to grow the, the department and programs we have up.
So you have up to 20 hours a week?
Right, up to 20 hours a week. And I would say that that's on an average. So if in the summertime, you know, they may be working 22 hours and you're coming 3 hours a week. They may hit 17 hours a week. They may hit 18 hours a week. So that's where I have put it, at $18 an hour, 20 hours a week. That's what I've put into the question.
Would you, would you need them during regular business hours or kind of folks around or?
Well, same thing. In the winter time, uh, regular business hours is fine. There's no need for us to be out until the parks. Uh, but during the summer, it's not regular business hours. I would need them on a flex schedule just like I am. Cause I would need them, weeknights, I'd need them week after.
Do you have a seat plan, so they're trying to include me on that type of job, really? Working parts out of play or be?
I know it might be hard to, hard to hit the horse, but do you have anybody that showed an interest or have you put out any feelers? Or is it just kind of establish some position and see if anything bites or see if anyone that's interested?
I, I did not have anybody in mind, but I do want to make sure that I have the approval of city council so that I can forward with this and be able to sit down with somebody and tell them, this is what it entails. This is what you can expect. And uh, and go from there. I don't want to sit down with somebody on this and say, this might happen, this might not happen. It could work this way, it might not work this way. I want to sit down with somebody and tell them exactly what I expect.
Um, also just to give you a little bit of info, you know, with the federal regulations, as long as you're under the 29 hours a week average, you don't have to, you know, withhold insurance or anything. Of course, they would be PICs, Medicare and IFRS, you know, contributing the other ten assistants. And I can tell you that, you know, some of you were on the council, but you know, when I started, you had me and one other staff person working remotely. And we went to two here. And it is a hard decision to know when to expand that position. But Lynn has expanded the maintenance position, uh, department. I extended the city hall position and I can tell you, following my recommendation, his recommendation, our people are busy and, you know, we needed those expansions and those extra people that filled in the gaps. As the workload increases, as our population increases or, you know, whatever, or new programs, um, we've been ready to meet them and, and keep the city running smoothly. And I would just, there's nobody that knows the operation of parks part of the, you know. And I would just, you know, I know the council trusted my recommendation. We needed to have, you trust Lynn's when he needs to add. I would just tell you to trust Joe because nobody knows their life.
I'm, I'm not against it. It might be hard trying to keep someone under the curve and while you're doing, versus like seasonal.
You know, that's what you guys said in 2019 when you hired a Parks and Rec director. That you felt that during the summer, he would be busy, but during the winter, there wouldn't be anything for him to do because sports weren't there. That was me.
I mean, I think we have to talk about, and he mentioned it, on the part that Cynthia's not going to be around correctly. Everyone's got one to put out the door, no matter how much we change. I mean, and, and Joe is old. Like he could be my great grandfather. So eventually, hopefully, we find, you know, someone that likes enough that as we grow, that they can either take over the position or interview with whatever process is. Or find someone that is, you know, is passionate about Fairfax going to the field. So I'm, I'm.
Well, I don't think it's just Fairfax sports. I want to make sure that that's clear. Cause Fairfax, yeah, it's the Parks and Rec. That's what I'm bashing above because it's not just sport. You know, we're starting a community garden this year for the very first time. And I'm not going to be out there hoeing every single day in the gardens and those type of things. However, though, there still is an amount of management that has to happen with those garden. So.
And you might find in having this position in two years that you're growing enough that this position does, we have full time, you know. We, we just don't know that future. This is a good step into it.
I will agree with Joe that during the winter is a good time for him to get caught up on getting work. During the summer, I think he lets it slide because he doesn't have the time. This, like he said, when he goes over contracts and does all those agreements and I, I see where that, and the same thing with like his vacation, he takes it now. Really be gone during the summer and things like that. So, I do.
Well, some of those things just can't be done in the summertime. So for example, um, the contract updates, those can't be done in August anyway. Cause I don't know what's going to happen between August and November. Do we need an increase in our pricing? I can't do an increase in the middle of the season anyway. So those agreements, they need to be done in November.
Once a year.
Yeah, that's just where they need to be. You know, do we, in this, in November, that's when I decided that we needed an increase in our rec program. That's the time to sit down and really think about where the department's at, where it's going to go, what does it need to get to where I think it needs to be? Or I think it could be.
So what do you guys like to do? Do you send a ready motion? Do you want to talk about it for a month? So if we have to do it, we'll move away. Do you want?
I would remind you at a job fair on March 1st, that give me a, well, this gives me an excellent opportunity to put this out there.
Probably look at, establish who now, if we want to do it, and we have interviews, we come to a kind of responsible interview, we second, we've experienced that with that. And then before you know it, it's already team ball.
So I'll make an emergency. I'll make a motion on one subject.
I have a second.
Second.
For all companies?
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Discussion and not a motion considering you clean them down the truck borders or purchase them for your 20 times.
I'm ready to take orders. I have to go forward with the, the heads.
Finance the project, so the money's here and it's worth a five for purchase.
Well, then one order.
Take that one.
You have to start the order process, how to get it in two years.
And basically, we negotiated 200,000 this coming year. And to roll that over again, addition another 220 times, that's finally clearly the end of the book.
And so as we were talking about it the last few months, we put this together with some of these old tests and looks to try another, this diagram.
Wasn't our pre-order about like 100,000 or so?
Uh, no.
No, I don't believe so. Okay.
No, we don't have anything on.
Yes, so we just pay one to get through.
I don't know if there's anything more. Thanks for the help so far.
Yeah. But the big thing is it could all tune in with this.
So yes, there's nothing guaranteed with the price. Anderson told me they're going to do their best to try and hold it. They think they got it priced competitively to hold it to that point, at that point. But Mac was not, well, neither, none of the truck chassis will guarantee anything because they have no idea. There's too many different parts of, the process of them can change with electronics and everything else. So that's where they're at now and I don't know if there's anything more you want me to explain out of that. We tried to do, it can work. We tried to get information from them several times and never did get anything. You stress the truck a lot. So, and the cab itself was maybe more user friendly than the freightliner version. And with it being apples for apples with roughly apples for apples with the engine and transmission between freightliner and all of them in Mac. We just, as I said, it was a little over for one. And uh, we think it's just a better fit.
Do you have a good, do you have a good, like view, like vision? I know the freightliners are pretty, like, user friendly as far as visibility, you know, you can see really well with them? Do you have that good sight with the Mac too?
Did they seem to?
I haven't seen a new one.
Yeah, we actually, Delaware County, so in scramble for all this, we tried to go get as much information as we could. So we went to Lynn County. Um, secondary roads up on Stone Point, talked to them, saw their trucks because they were, had similar stuff that we were looking for. And we went to Mac. Mac at the time had Delaware County truck, which is real similar to this one. So we actually got to climb all over it. Look in, sit in, see what the power on it, because they had the exact same setup that we were going to have. And uh, it seemed to be equal or just as better, or just as good as the freightliners for visibility. There was a couple of changes we did differently than theirs, but that's, that seemed it was like, okay, this sounds.
But then they filled the trucks more literally and you didn't buckle over?
Yeah, we did a lot of research in a short time to get to where we're at now. But that was the deal, was to try and see if we could get the okay, if you guys were all right with the process of saving the money to be able to do it. Because it was going to take till, I think they told me fourth quarter or four. So basically, at this point, two years from now, by the time we get a truck, so. If we were able to plan for it correctly, we could tell them and then we could get the call if that was okay.
What's the, what's the warranty? May I see?
Uh, so one of them, price line, they gave you the warranty. They had listed out their additional warranties. So when I wanted to price it, I had them all do the same thing. So that was apples for apples for apples. And uh, there's the, between the engine and the transmission, the big one is the after treatment, which is the depth. The slow emission fluid stuff. That doesn't matter what brand the truck you have. That seems to be the biggest issue across the board. Um, just talking with the even truck mechanic here in town, um, we've got some recommendations for him, what to look for and whatnot to put for it. That is something we can still talk about, whether we want to do that or not. I know there's a option on the box price that we're going to eliminate. That's like $3,500 that we don't want to have anything to do with. But at the time, he's like, well, let me price it. And so it's on there. So if you want it, at least it's not coming back later saying, I need to charge more. So there's probably a few things we may cut off of it. Whether the warranty and stuff depends on the price. I mean, if you want to try to hold the price and the warranty's sacrificial, then I guess that's where.
Do you even think that warranty's important? I mean, with talking to everybody else in that area?
It's hard. On ours, it's going to be a time. We're never going to hit the mileage recommendations that they had going with the warranty. It's like seven years and 250,000 miles. We're only at 30 some thousand or what we got now. So it's not like it's a lot of miles, but they're tough miles because they get a lot of, yeah, abuse in the city driving and and it's not like we're going up and down the highway. It's uh, in the in-town, low gear shifting all the time and whatnot. So. Yes, exactly. And we tried to do, between the route going single and tandem, tandem, we use more often than nine months of the summer than we do the winter time, you know, about 10 times a year. We get more use out of tandem. That's why we decided, beside the fact that that's the oldest truck that we got. So if we're going to start the rotation, we were going to start that and probably hold on to the other one for the time being, still use it and help expedite some of the stuff that we're doing in the summertime, or therefore be able to take on more projects faster, can. And then see where we're at with the use of it. And then maybe in a couple of years, readdress whether we got to deal with the other one or not.
And some of that depends on, you know, what's like the two years, you know, whether a consistent truck looks like this, we don't know.
Yeah. And then we don't know where we're going to be in two years with the money. At that point either, you know, if the loss disappears and whatever, we're going to make big trouble with trying to update stuff.
You will mention the bed difference?
The beds, uh, so we have one style of bed that comes out of Canada. There's a price difference on that. It shows up there. One was an 80, it was 83 or something, I think it was. And the comparable, um, one from Henderson, just the buy, the same parts, uh, was like 69. So that was what, $14,000 difference? Um, a lot of that has to do with it's built in Canada and then they have to score a thousand dollars and ship it down here on a hay rack. And then we have to deliver it up to Henderson to have them install it, which is not their body, but they'll do it. And then all the other stuff is blowing behind it. We, uh, the body that's on there now, we have to raise the box up to spread the sand, the one that we're looking at. You don't have to do that. So it's a safety goal. It'll just has a conveyor and a lot of that, uh, conveyor's to the front, spreads it ahead of the wheels, which is the same process that we have now. Helps the trucks get traction without uh, chains and stuff like that. Well, you don't deal with a lot of snow, but it does get slippery. So right now, that's solving our problems. We don't have to deal with chains. So we're looking to be comparable, but not, not the exact same. But we believe it's going to work just fine. I got all kinds of information apparently, but I didn't think it was worth you guys reading through it.
Well, it was good.
Got motion?
Sagan?
Aye.
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 Thanks very much.
Discussion and how can we change the first, need a silco or do you need more, it's my opinion?
Your turn.
So this is just our normal road maintenance stuff. I've got kids like always, from the room other than Ella Pelling. Um, and we have a code for this year, just kind of silco. Nothing to look at. We just need to get a crisis approval to accept it. So currently flows, um, Ella Pelling with the three dams where freight road builders is like two boats, 270. So I recognize one of those road builders.
On motion. Second.
All for you.
Aye. And Randy, Randy is actually here too, so.
We got grass.
We already said.
Sorry.
Think I affect the longest meeting, probably gonna. Okay. Any questions for me? As the weather gets a little nicer here, then we'll go around and look at stuff and then present you back what we see and then you can add to it, whatever.
You know, because the builder thaws on the ground.
Yeah.
That's what we're seeing the products.
Yeah. Do you, uh, do they usually sign up or do you send up?
We normally.
Yeah, I'll sign it tomorrow.
And then just mail it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Okay. Session of what she can do.
Thank you.
Part-time basis.
Oh, all right.
So yeah, that's me, Tim. Sorry. So this is kind of the replacement of Jace. Um, since Jace, he's going to finish school, um, going to go on to whatever we'd like to do for a future career. So this is kind of putting somebody back in that position. And we, we still have currently Jayden, he is working with us for the time this year. He's probably going to cut his hours back because he's actually finishing college too. If he gets hired on somewhere, but it's all up in the air, what's going to happen with Jayden this year. His hours are going to be cut back. I'm hoping to get him in two days. This year, that's kind of the plan.
Yeah, I got.
We may do a quick resource.
I get fired.
All companies?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So do we want to have a hiring committee like we have done for the maintenance department or for the seasonal?
Do you, do you think you can have one for the seasonal?
Maybe not. I don't.
We have had that in the past, it was. Well, we have.
I don't recall.
We did do interviews and that and we did not have hired.
Okay, great.
And you'll listen to that, this is what.
No.
Like, do you want to say?
I know why, I sense why it was like, I mean, it's a good one, simply can.
I didn't have twenty-two on here.
I didn't either, that's why. It's okay.
That's weird.
One who just did that for the.
So, uh, their altitude, nine hundred.
It's three one thousand, so we'll project us after any USGS participation.
And their end result of the study is, it's not our kidneys are water.
So it's probably.
I'm just.
Not using our water.
Or Johnson County.
I, I'm guessing this is um Johnson County's way of trying to protect. What they can use for water and their availability, so I don't oppose us to be part of it, I think we should have a state in. In this study, um. Because we do use water from the slurring and uh. Yeah, hopefully married and some of these others are in on it too, because they're awful large consumers of the water too. But I would say I would approve that, yeah, you recommend we do this to have a state and at least what's going on.
Cause nothing's really binding, it's just more back binding. Didn't you say earlier that the state's probably eventually gonna be the one?
Well.
Possibly.
Not regulated yet, but the more use and more water it does slur, and eventually they're gonna regulate it like they do in Georgia. And they did tell me that industry and big manufacturing will be the first ones cut off before the dispel ones are. So they will cut industry off on the large produce, and there are industries out there. Literally that use. Two to five billion gallons of day water.
What's the benefit of us? Being on it, we still get the information.
We'll get the information.
Regardless.
I mean, we probably won't have to say anything, but we will get the information and we can. Plan using that.
Well, I would hope that any of the public entities that are contributing and participating in the study may be invited to a table to initially talk about schools. Or, you know, planning, um, you know, they're not gonna be the entity doing the research. You know, and the end result, the end report, of course, will be public info, but I would hope if we send this, then we, you know. Maybe send a letter from uh the city saying, you know. Yeah, we want to participate, we wanna be, you know, at, at tables, you know, during the discussion part.
With the, because it is public information, so it should be over, it's a whole.
Right.
It's just like you said, having a state in the study, we're never. We may be small, but we are growing.
Well, this is awkward. I don't see why you shouldn't, I know it's, I, I would probably say more than nine hundred nine or five. I mean, like I said, it'd be nice to be able to go there first and this, and so getting. Of our input taken seriously, but at least we can say something. And yeah, this is what they say, they're. When it be, because it is suffering, it's just, you know, a concern of the parent or.
It's all it gives us planning tools for the future, are we gonna be able to live, uh drill another slurring well, are we gonna have to elsewhere? Or. Worst case scenario, are we gonna have to tap over Cedar Rapids? You know, there's, there's options out there. There's a lot to be explored as we grow.
Did you give someone that here?
You got fifty thousand.
Action to uh participate. Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Consider resolution to enter New Iowa DOT application of the use of highway rider, where you can determine the combinations for the watering extended from your. Done?
It's just a DOT standard form of agreement for putting utility in the right way. Pretty straightforward, straightforward stuff. Follow the traffic control standards, hold them on unless something happens. Typical. Any questions? Almost.
Also.
Hi.
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 Hi. Consider resolution to enter ultimate federal base, so to have an Iowa defense mission for this, we have a very key program, uh jobs. Shane?
Yeah, this is the agreement from the DOT that I think we discussed back and remember.
We're pressure everyone's memory, Shane, once we enter this, we have three years to get the project under.
That is correct, yes.
That Oscar cranes out, it's called original rocks.
Yeah. Now assuming the capital over one point five. Yeah, that's cap.
We don't take advantage of it. When you wait, remember you saying. Few meetings ago. They wouldn't give you a second shot.
Well, you go back in the queue and it may come up.
Yeah, but your chances.
Yeah, they uh. The last report said that it registered places for ten years, that was a couple of years ago. And it takes us three years to get it up to beds. You're looking at non-try position, you ever take?
Every year they're building here, they're.
Well, it's received a failure rate for how long? Ten years, fifteen years?
I've been here since old.
Yeah, like, oh boy, correct, fifteen years of it. Receiving a failure was in the. And I think now we finally had an opportunity. Through uh, we have to find a good stuff.
And in that time, when our approach was. Our uh, we. Fan label. Uh the underneath, yeah, but it was basically, you could put your hands on it. Only the bridge job.
Yeah, their team's reported, we built back in nineteen teams. Yeah, I think we established, the bridge was built with four cars.
Yeah.
She said we're a little over fifty.
And this does just cover the bridge cost, it doesn't have any real way.
Bridge and bridge related, like they.
What about the trails, is it gonna cover the trails?
No.
Won't cover the trails? Where are the plans at for this project?
There are no plans yet.
No plans, but yet they're okaying the money with no plans?
Yeah, yeah.
The DOT will design the bridge, is there, it'll be their project?
The two, no, it means.
Will design the bridge.
That's what we have in three years.
Oh, well, so, who is designing the bridge? I guess it sounds like.
The city will design the bridge.
So that would be you?
It won't be me, I'm not very familiar. So we'll, we'll work with uh an engineer. To design the bridge, not sure that would be that.
And who will be doing the bulk of the work, what firm?
I don't know.
Are they putting bids out for that?
We'll, we'll work with a consultant to get, to put the, together the bridge plans.
And how long will it be before we can see those plans?
When we have ready, we'll put them on to the city, public information.
Okay, so is there a timeframe that you'll have those prepared?
I don't have a set timeframe.
But the bridge has to be built in three years, is that correct?
We have to get it up to bits.
In three years? And so I understand that we're looking at a bridge now that is twenty or twenty-five feet. And the last meeting I was at, your plan that was set out, Mary Ann was here as well. A hundred forty foot bridge with a trail. On the side, is it going to be elevated? Or a trail under it as well?
Right now, we're discussing the agreement, we can go more details about the bridge later, right now, we're just talking about the agreement, so.
Well, I have asked repeatedly, because it affects us very, very much. About where these plans are, and we did have something drawn a few months ago.
Every, everything is preliminary at this point, sorry. So right now, there's no plans, when we add the plans, we'll give all, all that information to the public, to the adjacent property. Right now, the topic, the agenda item is the.
The bridge will be substantially bigger, because the whole bridge will go to a design standard from the nineteen hundreds. And the new bridge will require that it be longer and wider, so it'll be built to the new standard, so that's why it's gonna be big.
It appears from the. I have seen from Shane's work in a fast, in a fast meeting. It's gonna be the same size as the highway bridge, that gets about thirteen to fifteen thousand cars.
So, right, right now, everything's just planning. And we put out there a bigger footprint, hopefully we can do a smaller, but until we get into the designs, you don't know the exact.
He just used, he just used that as a preliminary drawing to kind of show. How if we move the bridge or how it's gonna, so we can kind of see what it would look like. But that's not what the actual ending would be, because he's not a bridge designer, we'll have someone else do that.
So does it seem feasible to the council that, you know, to replace this little bridge with a hundred forty foot bridge?
We don't have any say over that, that it has to be, it has to be built to a design standard that's. Safe, and that's not something that we control.
The DOT sets out specifications that remain with requirements, he would.
So the DOT is gonna be the one designing this bridge, as I was saying now, okay, so who is?
Well, he already told.
No, I'm sorry, I missed that, who is it?
A company.
A company.
Design.
So anyways, the bridge is not yet designed, everything is just preliminary planning. The agenda item is the agreement, council will.
All call please.
Hi.
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 Hi. So they gotta use now for Shane? Discussion concerning a line energy request about the big cedar. Um Shane, Shane's gonna talk to you about this with um. Coming from a meeting that we had, where we got, well, the big cedar. And their tone was for, for post. Next stage.
Is this the exhibit you want, Shane or the other?
Yeah, this is fine. So, uh as Mary Ann mentioned, uh three weeks ago or so. Our line energy representatives met with Grayian, Cynthia, Chris, Kevin and I. And uh. What they basically told us is. They wanna move forward with annexing all of the top areas, just. Basically, you know, everything that was part of that mega park. Four or five years ago now, we came to the city and talked to uh, talked to some of my partners. And you wanna get all of that annexed, including the conversion. Energy property, that's just up in Trabero, wanna get everything annexed. And so what they told us is that they wanna annex the eastern portion, so the part that's hatched there. Um. Yeah, so you see the purple hatch, and that's all in the Cedar Rapids side of the twenty, you've been between Cedar Rapids and City Fairfax. Just to the west of that, that area, they wanna annex that into Cedar Rapids, even though it's on Fairfax side.
I have no interest in doing that.
So they basically, they're gonna proceed with the annexation uh to Cedar Rapids. In the near term, I don't know the exact dates and stuff like that, but. So. Yes, that's kind of the basic. Details of the information that they shared with us, so I guess this definitely, you just wanna fight it. I assume the process can go. That they submit an annexation to Cedar Rapids, Cedar Rapids would have to submit the information, Fairfax could put within the mile radius. Even though it's against the agreement that's somewhat in place, depending on who you ask. And then it probably go to the uh state board and. You have to process, that's the processes. Or we can look at other options, and then go back to leave with Cedar Rapids and say, hey, I understand that there's gonna be interest in changing this. This is what we'd like to do. Or do nothing, I guess, so we're dependent on three options.
Well, one thing I'd like to comment in on is, I did ask the question, what kind of industry that they have plans, they already had. Industries that they want to move in there to house. And I asked what the water, wastewater requirements were. If I remember right, it was a from one to five billion gallons a day of water usage. There is no way we can supply that. Multiple businesses do this. I mean, even. It's, it's bad, they, even if you wanted to fight this, and they had come into a business that needed providing that kind of water. We can't do it. We couldn't do it in ten years. So.
I probably.
That's their, that's their rationale.
I probably hedged that bet a little bit. Are they, they know our situation here, now they're just saying that in track, I'm guessing here, right, but when, when they're gonna say something like that. That to me doesn't make me make, change my opinion initially, but. What's gonna go there and land? What's currently south of that will stop them from. Going straight south and trying to.
But the area that they wanna. Basically, they, their backs is, you know. So they're avoiding that too large. Industrial unit. At this point, we couldn't, they couldn't service.
They don't have, so they've been pushing this mega park panel for how long, and they haven't done it. Willing to sign the line. Cause my concern was like, well, why don't we, also parts of the already have service or that are waiting, so I have to push those areas and say. Well, we wanna be ready, so if someone comes and they don't wanna be that close to town, they wanna be out. We can offer them this property, even though it's. It doesn't have services to it now, so they're, they're wanting to take the whole thing, so that.
They have options.
If someone comes, that they could potentially take, even though they have yet to sell one parcel.
I remember what they said, they said, they're in the selling power, people that use the most power, producing most wastewater and use the most water. And that's what they're promoting, they're not promoting warehouses like Trabero. Um, I think, is my opinion, I think. Through this whole process, somewhere down around line, they knew what they were doing, put the Trabero warehouses on our side. And in the middle, they knew we were the middle service.
And, and to Kevin's point, when they met with us. And, and to Kevin's point, when they met with us, when we made this mega parks, to see after Fairfax area. We provided them all the water that we could supply.
Right.
Which they do, they do all the numbers and stuff. And they still report the remaining part that make part, they, they go all the big front of the bridge. So is he the core planning or is he natural on their part? We have to decide to ourselves whether or not.
Well, we specifically asked, well, you know, to build the part, the only part of the mega park that's got to come in is the warehouse and the type of things we service. Can you truly not continue to fill that hatch area with those kind of support? You know, if you have a big user on the other side, would they have to have some support businesses or some, you know, other types of buildings? They just said, we are not interested. Our board of directors is not interested in arguing that. Yeah, so they wanna annex everything at one time, in Cedar Rapids, is what they're saying.
I wanna be, I wanna be.
Or all the way up to here, just to make more growth, right?
To that, um.
Yeah, maybe we'll table over, yeah. Yeah, that, that last, it's a little bit thicker, it's not very easy to see, but that last, I mean, those are forty acres actually, these are squares. There's like eighty, twenty acres on West Wing Avenue. He said, well, we're gonna have that, that's those pretty. But we would need that anyways to get our sewer services out, our sewer distribution. So they're willing to take just a east hundred and sixty.
For now, until they feel like taking more, right? So I use the F word about once a year at, at city meetings. Uh, and I'll let it get it out of the way right away, but I think Cedar Rapids can go fuck themselves. I don't trust a single thing they do. They're run by idiots who could fail at SimCity, which is the easiest game in the universe to play. Uh, and I don't really trust their, uh, intentions with this long term, short term, medium term, everything else in between. And if you don't think they're gonna annex stuff along Wright Brothers Boulevard and try and surface list, you are on crack.
So that, that would, that leads us to the other thing was if they, if it doesn't make sense for us to actually have this and we wanna use it as a negotiating tool to say, you can have this, but then you wanna draw the twenty-eight year agreements.
Why should they be contested like they did with Heartland Ice forever?
Well, so that, so that we can try and use it as a negotiating tool to try to take that from that point south and over and extend the, the agreement that we have.
Well, enter into a brand new agreement. So there's no question about this old agreement, is it valid or not? Because now the Idaho code says that annexation agreements only last ten years.
Well, then why would we go into a ten-year agreement with them? Let them take off. It's so they can just wait ten years and do it all over again.
Well, ten years is the max you can get with Idaho code. The current agreement is already way past that. So, you know, would a court uphold the current agreement? You know, at one point, they said, it, we said it's here, they said it's valid, we said it's not, they said, you know.
Bernie has a letter from the Cedar Rapids attorney saying it's, I can't remember which exact date, but.
Yes, certainly they're not going to argue that point now. And, you know, one, Kevin says we can't service that, you know, they get those kinds of businesses in there. Two, will it hold up in court or not? We don't know. So do we want to at least try to negotiate and see if we can come up with a new agreement that should be valid for at least ten years? I don't know.
You can't negotiate for years. Well, you can.
I think you're setting precedents to whatever you may be.
Okay, so I'm very, very in.
Yes.
By the way, we offered them, made them an offer to trade properties for north of us now, and they turned us down. We're gonna trade the whole of the park from ground north of us, the highway thirty, and they turned us down.
No, didn't they wanna give us property that was like fifty miles outside of town and had no use?
We're awkward stuff up, cause my, my original is a long time ago. I wanted us to go all the way to highway thirty.
Develop until thirty thirty.
Yeah, I wanted to go all the way up to highway thirty and keep them on the north side of thirty. And then they offered us land to G S wherever ever wants. And they're gonna continue to try and bully us and do whatever they want.
So be prepared because we don't try and negotiate something.
They're forward.
They are going to, so we have, we will.
You wanna read.
Your problems. With the bottom line, can we service and they, the thing right now is they're gonna say, well, we need X for the service. Well, they don't, they can't prove that. They don't even have.
No, we can provide service for something that wants one million gallons to five million gallons. You can service plenty of other in that strip of.
So it's been, we're gonna get into that, or handworms.
Right. Fairfax, it doesn't, doesn't mean Cedar Rapids can't be serviced.
Right.
And that was the other thing, because we could always do a twenty-eight year agreement where we keep the property, we run and use their utilities.
As a feeling.
And that didn't end up very well, so it's time we did that again.
Yes, I mean, yeah, I, I guess it's definitely not true, but I, would I recommend we don't waste it. Feeling that we're.
So I guess, I guess the main question that we need to know is, we know they're gonna try to proceed. Do you wanna try to get them at a negotiation table, see if we're anywhere close, or you want us just to go turn it over to the attorneys right now and risk?
Do they need to know?
Well, they were.
Right away or?
You know, it was more of informational meeting where they just kind of said, hey, this is what we're gonna do, right?
Well, they said, they said they moved on the options. They own all the property already.
They bought everything.
Well, they already bought it all. And one other note, the property north of us, the thirty, they're running water all the way down one hundred, headed that way right now. The water plant is trying to double in size. They've been anticipating this for a long time.
I've seen I've, yeah.
So this, this has been in works time for the last lot of years, cause they're already acting on getting geared up to produce this amount of water. Put their little sources.
So we have options, but we don't have to do anything right now, but it's fine.
Sooner, the sooner if you wanna negotiate, the sooner move forward on that, cause it'll be I would assume they're gonna, I mean, it's been almost a month. I assume too much that these are just. It's maybe to drag it out as long as you know what.
What's the, our attorney's, what's the, based on the agreement, probably would be a shout here.
Well, I sent, uh, so we have our regular. Then when, uh, we have double Cedar Rapids about annexation, we use Dan Manning, not like to one of these, uh, land annexation specials. And, uh, was able to really quiet Cedar Rapids a bit, uh, previous, two thousand sixteen, annual situation then. Um, I did send him an email with the exhibits, letting know that we had an initial meeting. We were conscious. We're a little shocked at the meeting. Um, but I haven't, of course, I don't have the ability to engage him, you know, without you guys' approval. Uh, but like I said, you know, both sides of that agreement is valid or not valid. And the state code clearly says annexation agreements partial last just ten years. And this was entered into in two thousand and one, in a long time.
Yeah, two thousand and one.
Yeah, and it was drafted that kind of, it was supposed to last twenty-five years. Um, and it talked about a sewer, uh, running, sending some sewers to Cedar Rapids and his annexation. We don't do the sewer anymore. So the only topic still current is the annexation and we're way back.
Also supposed to follow this, you're gonna try and.
Oh, okay.
My class, they run through the journey, they're big ones.
I just don't wanna see them continue to reach out, cause it won't be long, then they'll say, could be the feeder will just find, take everything to the south and they're gonna push toward us. And I don't, I don't want them sweeping around the south side.
It's just my opinion, but the reason the towns around Cedar Rapids grown so much over the last ten, fifteen years is people are moving out of Cedar Rapids. And why would I want all the bad decisions that are having people move to Yale and Cedar Rapids and Iowa? Wall and everything else, not Walens, losers. Um, why would I want that even closer to our, our, to, uh, but different, or further south? Why do I want those kind of buildings that are turning through that, having their own stones?
Just my opinion is, I think you should get Dan Manning hired and involved. Not that I don't have faith in women's brain, it's just not their area of expertise. And then I really do think that we should contact them and get in a room with them, at least for one meeting. Maybe I'll lead them, try to delay them a little bit, you know, if they're drafting, get ready to submit something, you know, or they're, you know, reaching out. May, maybe we're miles apart and it will be no good, but if you don't try, then you can't. Same later in court, when we try to negotiate, you know.
Does the line try to do the dollars area and say, look out there?
Well, they're going.
It's not me.
They bought it, so they.
Yeah, they're absolutely, it'd be a hundred percent.
So it may not be a percent, there's, if they're gonna annex to the roadway stuff, there's a little font, so we've all done. So we will get, be tried, um, I'm not guessing, but.
That's it.
They still consider that.
Typically, you're sitting bored of development, even if you can argue the annexation for the twenty-eight year, two, three years, claim the board or not. As long as one is already been established, they're gonna be called and say, well, if this is not valid, pay them one, okay? You know, if there's already a good place.
Well, we didn't see deeds, but I don't think they said they're lying about that. I mean, that's so.
No, it's so easy to verify.
They own it. I, I've checked before we met, because when we first looked at annexation from conversion back October, November. If you look at the later, I know one of the farms, they all. They own all that, except for the little, I think, little homestead, make sure.
How long ago was the wedding supposed to be? Pass the finals? And, uh.
When we first met up mega park, is that? Well, a line didn't even, um, uh, we went and there was a bunch of people there. And I asked why Cedar Rapids wasn't at the table and a line didn't even invite them to the meeting that we were at.
I don't think they needed us.
Well, they knew. They'd already talked. I mean, that was a long time ago, Kevin, but, but yeah, they, they did not want to.
Say, yeah, we, there's like two annexation specials in this, which is, I would say, just retain him, uh, post-lease. Yeah.
Well, and do you want us to try to see about, you know, have Dan contact and see about?
I think we should, we should.
What's going on? And again, oh, we can be pleasantly surprised.
Yeah.
That, that would be, that would be my statement. And if not, at least later on, we can say, we reached out to them and trust.
We did, we did figure.
Yeah. Yeah, we tried to get in a grievance, another agreement.
Cause we're keeping the seven girls.
Well, the only reason, the only reason it happened a lot of time originally, I believe, was because we were wired to pop under their sewer. And they were seeing dollar signs. But we actually had language in that that we could pull, we could pull back from that agreement. And they weren't, when we told them we were gonna do that, they, no, you can't, you must agree to your agreement. And we did. So. I think that's the only reason the first one happens. Okay, so we're gonna have Dan Manning and we're going to see if he can coordinate any of the questions. Okay, let's move on. I have twenty-seven, consider us wishing to approve a revised personal policy.
So these are the changes that we previously discussed, just to. Policy forms. That all the changes were on the one page. Adding the holiday and the vacation purge.
I think something we didn't, I'll just touch on it. The consent agenda, that Johnson County, uh, who is, sorry, Lynn County bases information talks a lot about three, two hundred people. When you look at it three weeks is not up for the times. And I think this, this helps. All motion to approve the revised personal policy.
I'll second.
Call, call please.
Hi.
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 Hi. Consider resolution to approve a revised investment policy.
So this is something that we either approve every year or every other year. Um, and as I was, uh, was pulling in and out to review it, um, I updated the bank totals, um, as we have bond money on hand, um, but that's the only change that I stated is the totals. The state requires that you have a personal policy.
Second.
Call, call please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Consider resolution for employee compensation.
This is for, um, the library, um, net, and Kevin might wanna give them both. Um, they made a motion for, um, their raises to be effective January of twenty-three. I believe they went with the five percent less than half them like we did. Is that right, Kevin?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions right now? Right, our motion. Second. Call, call please. Oh, who sent it?
You did?
I can, oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear it.
I know, it's still, it sounds like it may ask you.
So roll call please.
Hi, 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 hi.
Hi. Discussion of possible motion concerning the D Y Raj Sel Dini, May twenty.
May twenty, um, would be our regular weekend. Um, so we, uh, we wanna put something in the next newsletter and start, actually started having calls to repeat. So one, do you wanna still do it? Uh, you wanna leave the fee to participate on the map, the five dollars? And you want the city to organize it to spearhead it like we've had the last few years? This is, that's three questions.
Do we get decent participation?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll see what.
So.
Motion.
Second. Call, call please.
Hi.
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 Discussion of possible motion concerning annual plan update of June.
So this is a date change. Um, if you remember during our, uh, contract extension, Republic asked us not to be that first weekend in June because of the, uh, Memorial Day holiday. So we looked at the next Saturday and the room's already booked. And we talked to the person and they're going to, um, have people start coming in ten. Um, so we didn't wanna do, uh, that Saturday and so then we moved to the next one where we didn't have any participants in the morning. Usually, um, we do it here in the Parkmont from second, ten again. And again, we'll start to, I'm not sure we'll have something about this in the margins, but we will have the eight or both left motion.
Second.
All as a favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Discussion of possible motion concerning Tina Rose's plans attending the annual I C C conference in Minneapolis.
This is, this is a, an, a nationwide, actually, it's an international conference that, um, Kathy, everything gone to one, gone to one. So we only think about attending it when it's within driving distance. I went to Simo, I don't see Kathy, I went to Omaha. Um, now it's gonna be in Minneapolis. I'd love to say, send me, but at my point of view, you shouldn't be sending me to this. You should have one of the younger people go and give you information. Uh, this is where I learned about iCompass, our meeting, managing. Uh, this is where I learned about iCompass, our meeting management software. You get vendors there that you don't see at our local, by our legal cities. And, uh, so you get some information, let's see, really, but, um, I always recommend it to senders, and we always have enough in our budget in case it would be close enough, um. So there, there is enough to train your developers.
All motion, we, we, your job is better than we're very large.
The second.
All as a favor.
Hi.
Discussion of possible motion concerning mayor free room specification, action with building. Bernie, are you still on? Bernie, yeah, or to you, or to your topic?
Okay. Well, I think, uh, I think the letter that I submitted was the patent one.
Yes.
Okay, so the councils have a chance to look at it. And obviously, even more people than that had a chance to look at it, because of that Casey or Jean, this is your height. So I think it's kind of self-explanatory. Uh, there's some things that I can't do right now. And I need to go to a physical therapy sessions to get done. And I can't get into even starting until July. So I think somebody that's, uh, been hurt shit like I used to be, been had to look out instead of me.
Bernie did meet the staff, uh, yesterday afternoon. And, uh, you appreciated his comments to staff, particularly all extended our thanks for his twenty years of service. Yes, Bernie, thank you for your service, we have to compare us very well.
Well, it's going to take some time, it can take. Didn't know that I can't. Yeah, and I appreciate everything the staff said, and I appreciate what you said there, and you know, I, I, I agree with all this city has added. I hope that whoever is next will keep it in that same direction. Because I think the only, the only way to tell our side can survive.
So in your path, I think is the part of the Iowa poll about a city elected official vacancy. Um, the council really has a decision to make, you have two options. You can make a motion to fill the vacancy by appointment, or you can make a motion to fill the vacancy by a special election. If you make a motion to fill it by appointment, um, you don't appoint this meeting, you, uh, put a notice, um, in the paper, giving people the ability to turn in their names as, um, being considered. And then, uh, you could appoint, you have sixty days to appoint, but I guess I would recommend that you probably, you know, put in there that you're going to appoint at your next meeting, which is now the twenty first, not the twenty fourth. Um, and, uh, then the, um, public, if they don't, um, want you, uh, filling it by appointment, they can get a petition together to require a special. Um, I did talk to Lynn County Elections, and their estimation of a special election cost was about twenty five hundred dollars. Regardless of whether you appoint for a special election, it's just until the next municipal election, which the mayor position would, is on the ballot every election in Fairfax, because it's just a two-year term. But even if it had been a four-year, not expiring, it is only until the next municipal election.
You want to go ahead and make a motion to appoint for next, uh, meeting, or should I reverse? Um, see who is in place, if I have a special. Nine minutes.
March fifth, seventh.
In the universal? Second, I'll start. Go, Poppy.
Hi.
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 I will, uh, give the. Of course, the best. Thank you, Bernie.
Thanks, person.
Thank you.
They're all very welcome, they've worked for the dollar.
Even me, Bernie?
Well. She wouldn't go away, she'll stay around staying.
Joe can't talk or knows, really.
Figuring out how I'm going to spend that fifty thousand doc? You guys don't think that's funny?
Okay, so, um, you, uh, if you remember last time, we kind of reviewed the, uh, C I P and you just came up with a little bit of, uh, bonding project. And so I contacted the bonding attorney and Maggie's here.
Nobody wants to listen to this?
And, uh, Maggie gave out some in line, um, for a G L bond. We also talked to her about, uh, an S R F, uh, for the, uh, water project, uh, the rest of the costs really well. And, um, she is starting that process, and we talked to her about the zero interest planning S R F loan for the treatment. Um, so she is looking into those. Um, the second page of her information is kind of gives the estimated project costs. Um, so these are the, uh, items that we talked to her about in G L, the water tower project, um, which is the maintenance, and then the bridge design, um. And, uh, then their cost of issuance, they're looking for issuance up to a million and three estimate. Um, and I believe your homework assignment was to look at the C I P list and see if you wanted to add anything to this. And then also, I think we had gotten down to the global census tax, we have hundred and forty two thousand that wasn't specifically allocated. Um, and so I've updated the, the last, on report, and I'm going to make a suggestion. You know, since nothing really jumped out at you, and what, in thinking of it, you probably something for that hundred and forty two just essential. I would suggest you just let it be for right now. See what property taxes are going to do. Um, if you look on the last page of the budget form, or the second to last page, the estimated fund balances, I, I didn't put in the beginning fund balance in the general, I just wanted to see what new numbers we're doing. And I did already make the adjustment down the other one point eight whatever percent. I already changed those numbers. And so, uh, it would look like your, if you took in everything like you saw, only that, and spent everything that you estimated, that you'd be about a hundred thousand short. I can tell you that almost every year I've done a budget here, that's where we're kind of predicting, you know, before it actually happens. Our estimates are never exactly accurate. Um, right now, we have about a half a million in the general fund checking account that's not already is not hard at funds, and it's not already specifically allocated for something, um. So. I mean, I'm open to, we can bu- budget that hundred, other hundred and forty two. If you've got ideas for it, and then you can just wait, see if you authorize it, you know, budgeting, it doesn't mean it's spent. Or you can just leave it in there and see what happens, and we always do a budget that usually do it, but.
Well, let's see what comes back from Prairie Road Builders there, you have to, they have to look at more than what you're putting up.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we should spend it until we know what's going to happen with, um, with the largest thing in Apple. I just, I just think it's, again, unless you have something really pressing, I think it's, you should just let it be.
So I think it jumps out at me, it's not at that price, we should give at some point Church Street for the notes, it's, it's built, we'll go ahead and see if they have the library or else, we'll be honest, well, of course.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about the bond, I'm just talking about the hundred and two.
Two.
Yeah.
The last room.
Yeah, so, yeah, the bond, that's up to you guys, you know, that's.
That's what I think that jumped out at me. The sewer, great. You're talking about the year, year one. Uh.
Two, five.
Still two, five. When you said the sewer, you're high in with Church Street, uh, redo all the sewers for the water sugar plant. What was, better, part of the street doesn't do that anyway. We're talking about something where we basically solve part of the puzzle, we can do two wells instead of one. We have to do a treatment center, and, uh, connect it to get such a church street, build a church street, put in a new infrastructure. And, uh. And now that goes, unless we know that well.
God, that's true, but, uh, they also have this high probability that, because they won't say anything certain, so. It'll be, uh, red dust. So yes, good theory, right, they roll the well, and if they interrupt shit's created, yeah. Let's hope not, that's a whole other channel. Yeah, okay.
You're talking about the Heartland Heights participation, Bernie, possibly letting holden on that, or? Yeah, would you want to allocate money for that, the bottom one? Or, who am I? So, for participation in the sewer?
That's hundred and sixty six. Yeah, truly, and I don't, I know about this much, how did? The participation in the Heartland Heights, that worries me, the timing, that if we're not prepared to do that.
What, how was that ordered in the pond, if you were, what, people use that ceremony for the breaking, they wanted to? This wasn't that tied to.
Oh, you mean the hundred and sixty six?
Oh, that was working fine.
It certainly wasn't ordered in the pond. Yes.
Oh, that's stupid.
That I know for sure.
Okay. Which would go to the city, right? I don't know, but I, what's our last, prepared, bridge, bridge? So connect all the industry's close, how it's going, down to your trails and stuff. So we're like going somewhere, I guess.
Yeah, there's, the presidential streets, just side markets, over the street, so. And there's a possible, we can go and you're, I'll get back up to eighty percent, that's, that would be. I would say. We've got to do it, we've got much product.
And we've already bonded for design, so. So the things on the first list, we got the, that first one in the proposed bond. The three we haven't done anything with, the five, six D we have in the proposed bond. Um, the four sixty eight and the three twenty five, we're looking into S R F. Joe's going to spend another fifty four. The, the ten, the twenty one, the twenty four, and the twenty six, we've got covered in regular budget. Is that correct? The.
That's what we were talking about last, right?
Yeah, so it's on the first page, it's just that three eighty isn't we think already part of placement placed.
Last meeting, we're at what? The eight hundred for S R F, and then one point two six.
Yeah, I'll end up G A one, three G L.
Everybody's still happy with that? My Cynthia said, I'm also very, the wording when you're participating with that should be. Can't be interpretation, yeah, maybe I'll say it that way. What's that much? Eight, if I want to.
What do we have to have the old rules for yours? Yes. Are you working on it?
They're, they're pretty, they're pretty possible, we said that was waiting out.
Yeah, there's a little publicity, you know. I mean, my mindset is to do what's needed, they say, and I was the most classroom, because we know we don't do this, same thing as years. And it's off, yeah, that's not like this.
Do you think?
And you're, you have rest to you.
And something you see on the two by the some of those are.
So if I understand Cynthia correctly, starting at the bottom, one, two, three, four, the bottom four, paid with existing parts.
Yeah. And the ten.
Yep, and and then from there, bottom four.
The, the three twenty five and four sixty eight, we're looking into S R F. Um, the, uh, the three twenty five is the plan zero percent, and then the four sixty eight. Rest of them, as we already, remember, we are using our ARPA money and county's ARPA money for the other part of that well project.
So then the five sixty, seven hundred.
Are up here in this proposed.
Three, that is still kind of hanging out there, more. Like this. And then people want five year.
Shane, do you think we need to meet with Iowa law about updated cost estimates or tiny, or?
No, it's based on the F A D processes that's.
Okay. And what did they say about tiny that?
I just need, I don't know, in this fall, I'm going to, you know.
Right.
Punch of the stuff is positive. They've said, we've listed something, want to see see the trade on. The trail, the trail, we, we're screening down the bridge, let's come on, beat new bridges. This assessment includes taking the trail over the, the still ways, not in short. This assessment includes taking the trail over the spillway, stop and short it. And that's fifty percent. The city's, the city's obligation or bad.
Is this the West Cemetery, where the bridge you're talking about?
There's a walking trail on a little pedestrian bridge that goes up at the new development around their like retention pond.
Is it gonna hook up with this one dollar?
No, this is, this is just the trail around the pond. No, here's a little rocky bridge for the spillways, is that right? I don't know. So this just circles the little retention pond, it was part of our agreement. The development agreement, when they started that.
Is that a good work team?
How you doing?
Everything, but not. We got one forty lost and fifty from Joe.
Did you say I got a hundred ninety? That was just the tip, that's for. You're not even on page two.
Well, those are the high. There's not a whole. Just point out, page one there, I have put in that decrease, so still isn't really respect, I'm planning on it. And should it go through, then it's like gonna change the fire department budget, because that's based on. Both of them heard in our taxable evaluation, so there'll be some, and I didn't go ahead and make Joe's adjustments. Uh, so there'll be a trickle down effect. But, um, there's lots of ton of balances and stuff that I filled in. Got your, your subtotals of your different, um. Revenue sources and your project, your expense functions. Just wondering, does anybody with the core details filled in, do you have questions about any of the budget?
Question I have is, Joe. You got, for your revenue. That concessions sale. So far this year, you're eight, but you got fifty four, and you got grants. That, what's your, I thought with that, fifty four thousand with.
Are you talking about earnings, or are you talking about concession?
Both, both, on both of them.
So what's, I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me, what's the grade?
Well, you've got twenty thousand for grants, and for budget years that we're in right now, you have a thousand dollars, but. You went up to twenty, which would be great, if we did that, I was just kind of wondering what your thoughts are for twenty thousand, and then concessions stands are fifty four. Meaning, that's fantastic, but just wondering what your thoughts are to get.
Well, for fifty four, for one thing, remember that the the city is taking over operating all the concession stand. So even the Fairfax rec programs, Monday through Friday, that's income for the city. In the past, the city only had the tournaments on Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, that's all these numbers.
That's, that's all. And you do, you know, with grants, we're always looking for grants, we're always looking to, um, get some money, free money from somewhere, so. It's just like our, um, parks donation, but one time I think Mike asked me. Uh, on five thousand dollars, if that was realistic, and the answer is, we're always looking for donations, you know, so.
But that wouldn't be spent unless you got the grant.
Right, yeah, I did. When I saw fifty four, and I didn't know, Joe, that that is numbers just on the weekend. That makes sense not to me, but just to put numbers in there, you wanna be as close to your projection as you can, and that's why. I was asking what the fifty four.
All those numbers are in all that data, I have, um, um, yeah, but I know there's a lot of stuff to read. So, the other thing, just to, uh, keep you, uh, so that you understand this, the city works on fiscal year. However, though, the concession stand works on a calendar year, all of the Fairfax used for. Um, all of the rentals, all of that stuff works January from December, and it's actually April through October.
Right.
So.
And you do the bulk of it up until July, and then?
Uh, still, we have, yeah, we have, we have a little bit in in August as well, because we have, uh. We have, uh, Mount Mercy baseball that comes on in, uh, August, at the end of August, so we, we got some stuff. What other questions on there?
That's all I had, with those couple, for me.
I made a, a couple of adjustments, I remember, oh, well done, probably not, I know. When I came up with what the general funds, you know, difference between revenues and expenses, where I went back to see if there was anything that. Could be, um, downsized a little bit, I know one thing was, um. The, uh, building department line that we added, just an estimation about the conservation improvement thing. I took it down from ten to five, again, it's just a. I I don't know that anything could be sent this fiscal year, it's just kind of a little before, it's one of them would have it. So I I made some adjustments while I'm back, but nothing, nothing large. Um, and I am, next meeting, I'll have budget amendment. Recommendations to do as an April budget amendment. I I like it clear through this budget process, so I really have as much info as I can before I. That's able to use a member term on this, can you again? Any other questions on any details, I'm sure you each read every single one. Um, you know, we're not proposing a water or sewer rate increase. I have filled in the what transfers I would anticipate now, such as. Uh, you may have heard me mention before that the water debt service fee isn't enough to cover all of the water. Um, requirements, so we do transfer some money out of the regular water to cover that, so I feel, I've done those calculations. Those numbers are in here now. On the sewer page, you know, we got, because the sewer loan is a revenue debt, they require us to. Uh, take in a hundred and ten percent of the bond requirement, I calculated that, where that would be the two hundred. Thousand two eighty eight, and just in our sewer debt service. Be, we we are recovering that. I've got the amounts in for the trust group physically twenty five, so you know, the hundred thousand of twenty five, twenty five, twenty five. Um, page twenty nine, kind of see garbage fund tracking, and we'll just continue to look at that. See where it goes. I really don't have anything else, I was just one and two there, but I just. I do hide like.
Nervous to include chain of rest.
No. I remember not posting. And certainly, if you have questions after the meeting, feel free to give me a call, but I will do work based on. What we discussed, I will be working on the budget hearing notice that I have to publish, it'll be in the next. Fact, published in the paper before the, for the meeting, of course, like I said, every year, these are our best guesses. And, you know, you can always amend, you can amend the taxes, evidently stick, yeah, but we can't, the taxes, but there. But, um, you can amend it. Sorry, Barry. Does anybody have any questions, please, hello?
Who was that middle part?
So you want me to have Maggie proceed with the proposed bond schedule, I'll let her know. Change date in March, go ahead and forward with that. And, uh, have her give us an update on the SRF, so she's checking on me.
I do have one serious question, did I see correctly, that we had about two million in debt payments, or what, this this one year? I just, I, let's see if it's roughly that for a year.
Yeah, yeah, uh, we, we pay off a million, at least every year in principal, and then, you know, of course, we've got the others. And so page thirty four. And thirty five. Yeah, those don't include the SRS.
This is straight G O, is what I was.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, okay, let me answer.
Claims, is there a motion to retrieve Penn's listing for year fourteen?
Oh, just a second, I just want to make you aware that we added one more at five thirty tonight. What's in the packet now is updated, but it was just one more parks invoiced.
What was the, uh, target?
Oh, yeah, twenty three, yeah.
What was, uh, start equipment? Bought it for start, okay, I'm just using the right.
Yeah, and those were pre-approved.
They do a lot more than that.
Sorry, I need to. I motion to pay the laws.
Second.
All listen bigger?
Dan was there. Dan was there, fifteen eighteen, Heartland, um, sorry to rewind the agenda, but. Uh, the special election for the mayor, it's like they're reapproached that potential for. A special election versus appointment. Um, what I understand is we got a hundred fifteen signatures, the things fairly easy to get. So save time and cut the chase, maybe you just approach that, set, set up for the appointment process. And they just have a special election at the end.
I think also we can save money, we can't pursue.
I'm with him on that, on the special election. Since the last election was so close, within what, three votes or four? Really, I think half of the town would just be happy to have Joe in, but since. I doubt the council's gonna maybe do that. Uh, maybe a special election would be the way to go, and it would be fair, and everybody can vote and have a say. So I'm with him on that one.
I'm Dan Bushman. President recognize me, personally remember that. Only come here, I don't do the real thing, but it's for the city, keep to myself out there. Got a issue with this thing, you guys will probably run around when it happened. So I kind of choose to stay away. Try and build a building out there, if it were starting April, it'd be two years and one month I've been working on this project. In the city of Fairfax. I don't know how long it usually takes to do something, seems to get long. Now I've been jumping through hoops, DNR, a bunch of other stuff, Shane's been guiding us through that, on some of that. Then we had some zoning issues, you all wanted heavy industrial, then you didn't, it's another month, another month, another month. We've had plans going up, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent what Shane wanted, but. Pretty darn close for a while. And about a week and a half ago, I'm on town for. Eight days or whatever, but I, I'm getting emails saying, nobody in the town's gonna improve this building unless I. Because I need to subdivide it. The water and natural sewer, and that's all fine, and after a year or two, if it wasn't somebody might have said something. Before a week or so, before the city council meeting, that was supposed to be on. So, if the man's already changed, I have time to look at it, and Chris has got issues and stuff, that's fine, that stuff we can fix. But tonight, we just wanted to come and have a discussion on what does the city want, because I'm two years down the road on this. Um, that's that property out there, it'd never be separated. It it can't be, there's, you know, and I had a discussion with Bernie years ago, he was asking when I was gonna do something. And I said, Bernie, it's just cost for him to do anything out there, because there are power lines that's existing and future all over that property. So where I can go, those are where I can do stuff, it really doesn't work, and this is our wet out there, I mean, I. You know, if I relay sewer at, you know, point five percent, I can banhold down there, I'd be about four feet deep when I got to my building. I don't have the groundings, so I have to pump everything too, now I have, I can, I I don't need sewer, I don't need water, I've got a well. Um, thirty by sixty area, I can pump to above drowning sand filter and take their homes down. So, but you put the water still, then I was kind of more than willing to maybe engage in that. So, and you know, I did have, when I. Was out of town and saw the email that, you know, well, we, you know, fire hired it, blah, 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 I immediately called. Uh, brand engineer and said, hey, change that, the line down the property that said two inches, I said, change it to an eight inch water main. Put a fire hydrant between the two future buildings, and see if that's what they like, because I need something to know what that hardship is gonna cost me. Because I've been, you know, putting this together for two years now, and now you're gonna throw seventy thousand dollars in cost of the job, and we can act. We're supposed to go to council, maybe get a building from that? We can't do better than that? Seriously, I mean, you know, I mean, you you know, getting dirt ground on the zoning and stuff, I've heard, I mean, not a big deal, but it's. I, I would certainly think that we could have stuff together, but now, well. You know, I mean, I didn't have to pay six thousand dollars to have someone come out and sample plants to prove that I didn't have a wetland. Plus the DNR, two cents for the crown, and I colored down a brick, plus me six thousand dollars, hire a guy from the University of Bio, prove it wasn't. Just so, I'll just check some boxes. I mean, I've got tons of costs, I'm I've got tons of expenses. You know, you got plenty of land going on, and if you don't wanna do, you don't wanna do this stuff, just put me back on the county. Hell, just Mary Anne, get these papers out, y'all, consider right now, I'll I'll go back to the county, get me hurt. You know, uh, what do you want? You know, it's not being subided, I'm not running current dinner, I'm not paying the street a thousand feet back there for one building I get. You know, it's not being sub divided. I'm not running curb and gutter, I'm not paying the street a thousand feet back there for one building. It it does not work mathematically. You know? I mean, maybe I have a water main, woodwork, what a park I did, not a bad idea, not opposed to that. But really, when I'm talking to the guys that want to come out here, because I'm trying to get Casey out of. You know, the one fifty one corridor out here, so you don't have a bunch of junk trucks sitting out here for everybody's looking at how it's supposed to look nice. E I B has a nice looking facility. You guys try and, you know, keep that looking nice. And I agree, that's a good idea. You don't see any junk trucks because I put ten thousand dollars into a parking lot where Casey parks all the trucks now. For free, no charge to him, just to get the trucks out there so that it doesn't look like crap. And, you know, it's still pretty far back there behind that guard wall and you don't see it, it looks better. But you know, I mean, E I B, they got a lot right across the road on one fifty one. You can throw some base, some max small buildings. We can park all those trucks right there. Casey can park his old motor over there. He can drag that truck right across the highway and put it right in his garage. And the and the old junk trucks can sit on one fifty one. That was the idea. I don't, it's probably all lose to you. You guys rather don't know any of this, they're. I mean, nobody's gonna hate me. Nobody's gonna talk me into all that stuff on, I mean, I talk to Kirby and stuff on. But you, what do you want? I mean, it's it's a cost to Casey to hire a tow truck to my place, tow a truck all the way back to his shop. You know, you don't see his old Michigan over going through town dragging a. Dragging a truck with a hood off of it through your tower, you know? So, I mean, I'm trying to help out as much as I can and I got nobody helping me out. I mean, I feel like it's, my look, it's bare batch. I'm like Cedar Rapids, fuck off. Quoting, you know? I mean, I donated that dust stuff just when I moved out here to this town and and you and. And people before you give contract, other contractors jobs for five, six thousand dollars more than my bid. You know, give other contractors work, you don't call me, you don't talk to me by military glory and when they're, you know. Millions of thousands of feet from your job, you know?
Dan, I have a question for you. Uh you weren't here earlier, but Chris and I had a very heated discussion. Um he said that he's reached out to numerous times about different questions and that you know.
Yeah, I was out of town and I, when he sent the email, I was out of town and I called Justin and I'm like, hey, I'm out of town, I'm on vacation. Like, can you look into this? Because Chris said, hey, give me a call and and he's like, okay, yeah, I'll talk to him and then he's, you know, I I sported an email. He's like, okay. And so he called Chris and he talked to him, you know, on some stuff. And he's like, hey, you know, well, it's not quite there yet. And it's like, okay, well, we just need to know what you want because I'm I'm not sub dividing. You know, what do you want? I mean, I'm not putting curb and gutter, you can't afford it. That was, I mean, I talked, had conversations with Bernie on this. Uh years ago, and I'm like, it just doesn't work. You know, now Casey needs a place to go. There's a few other guys that need a place to go and and that's why we're, you know, bringing it out there, but. But uh yeah, I mean, Justin kind of had it under control and he just told, he told Chris. Just leave us on the council, we'd at least like to get in there and just, you know, say, hey, what do you want? You know, what 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 do, what are you gonna require of us? You require us to put the water main in? That's actually seventy thousand dollars. I mean. Um I mean, you got a hundred, three hundred thousand dollar bridge going in around somebody's, you know, detention pond. Do I, you know, I get. Do I get thirty five thousand dollars to put water in? You know, I mean, you wanna do some kind of development agreement or whatever. I'm not up here asking you for money. I'm just asking to just go about my business, you know? Don't need your wires, don't need your sewer, you know, what do you want? I'm pretty self sufficient. You know, I don't bug anybody. Nobody ever sees nothing. People leave places apart, overflow apartment, put it right down the lane. I don't care, that's fine. You know, people wanna walk their dogs out there, chase bird out in the back. How many people walk their dogs out on my place? I'm out on property, no problem. But. But to get, you know, to get a, get an email to say, you know, hey, you know, nobody in the city's gonna approve this and, you know, just. Blow me out, blow me out of water nine months ago, so we can start working on this, you know? But I mean, now we're, you know, another month, 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 every month, you know? I mean, I'll I'll look at whatever you want. I don't, I'm not opposed to it, you know? Uh but, you know? I'm gonna, it's gonna be July. And not because of me. You know? I mean, I don't have the best engineer working on it, James, but he's alright. Uh not the fastest, but. You know, we'll try and get things as quickly as we can and change, you know, and I think some things, things are changing, did get put in and and. You know, as far as the last I had heard from Chris and like I said, I think Justin and Christopher were communicating because I was out of town. You know? So, but I I I was on email and stuff too though, so I mean, if Chris wanted to send me an email and say, hey, you know, we. You know, we need to take the plan off the agenda or whatever. You know, let me know, and at least I could have said, yeah, but, you know, but I looked at my emails, I told Chris to take this off, you know? I didn't have a phone call with him and I and I forwarded Justin all my emails.
That was the muted discussion.
Yeah, and Chris does it, and Chris does a great job and does a thankless job and and I don't wanna bust Chris's balls. Either, I mean, he he knows what he's doing, he's he's a good guy, um but, you know, just, yeah, we had some miscommunications, you know? But, you know, what do you want? I mean, if you don't want me, throw me back in the county, that'd be great. You know, I love it. I'll section off a two hundred foot piece up front there. We can keep that as the city and somebody can build something up there and. Buffer the, call it commercial, buckle your buffer, the industrial and hook up your water there. And I'll just, uh you know, keep going back. I'll keep going to the, to the east, by arrows and we keep going that way, so. Not, it's not hard, I just, you know, pretty easy to get one one. I just, you know.
So Dan's here, and then can we have any questions for Dan? And now this is getting kicked to P and Z. Did you, were you aware of that?
What's that? What's getting kicked to P and Z?
So, um.
I've already been through P and Z and the V O A.
Yeah, I think Chris is gonna contact you tomorrow, letting know about it. He's here.
Do you have an understanding of why it's going back to property in the? I don't think it's on what the board of adjustments discussed. It's on the property. To the east, I don't. I'm not aware of all the details of this, so I'm not gonna say too much.
So property to the east has something to do with me, right? Right now, I don't know if that's fair or if it's in the life trust of his office, so.
Is property that you're looking to to put some buildings on?
I own that property, yeah, that's me.
I think that's what Chris had talked about.
I assume that's zone light industrial. You wanted heavy, so I jumped through the heavy hoops and then you decided you wanted light, so we went back another month and. And jumped through the hoops to do all the light.
Yeah, we said we wanted heavy, we wanted to look at the options available.
Oh, I was told by Chris that you had to own heavy. I'm like, whatever they wanna do.
The short, short version is we looked at whether heavies would be a good option with you or what you were wanting to do out there. Decided long term heavy was not, so.
I disagree.
I agree. After, after Chris decided to stick with light, for what you were doing, you ran into a variance through your project, which. If memory serves, it's just variance valid from you. It's not attached to the project. So then, so to that point. We wanted to make sure we had the right zoning court, both short and long term. Now as to moving forward, the, I don't know if you were here earlier. I said I wasn't prepared to make really have any discussion on it because I need more detail from what you were wanting. And what the city and then hearing is wanting. So it's important to project.
So what, what do you, so what do you want? I mean. Do you not want me to build a building out there? Is that what you want?
We don't know any details because it's not on the agenda for us to even to discuss it, so I don't know any details that, that Chris has wanted.
Well, there was a submission just in the end of last week, which.
What was, yeah, it was an update. Well, that was an update, update responding to Chris's email on something that he wanted. I said. Well, let's go with, let's do an updated plan and we'll go with, hey, you have the two inch water maybe, or we don't need water at all. Or we had the two inch water, or we had the eight inch water. But the thing is, is I can't, I can't figure out how much the cost is if I don't then. Say, okay, because we didn't change any lines or anything. We just re-labeled from two inch to eight inch and said fire hydrant.
Well, there's a submission, this city staff, city engineering has to have time to review it to, you know. See if they're gonna change their, we won't recommend to. We do, or we do with these changes, you know, there was just no time from the end of last week to tonight to have that ready.
Fair enough. So, so that's a plan review issue. What's the property and zoning issue?
Cause my understanding, he's gonna have them look at it, which is at the meeting next Tuesday and it sounds like.
Oh, look at the site plan.
Yes, so look at what your plan is.
Okay, so not like trying to rezone back, okay? Alright, so that's, that's what, when you spring a property, it's being like, just just had two, three, four months trying to zone.
Keep in mind, put yourselves in in our. We're just being a little bit more because of being in in. Whatever, but we don't know any plans on what you're talking about. It's not on the agenda, so we can't really talk about it, discuss in depth.
Yeah, it's post frame building, you got them all down here, corridor here, it looks the same.
But again, so for us to make just long discussions about it is not, it's not a place to talk.
And 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 I know Shane, he's trying to look over and stuff. I just, like I said, I. I just sort of update to him so that I could say, okay, here's something and so I'd like to move that longer. I'd like to do this or whatever. So I have something, because I need to know what kind of hardship that's gonna cause on the project. So, because.
Dan, do you have any kind of site finish shows, like your easements and your, like all the places where you can't build?
Yeah, they're, it's on, it's on the site, it's always on the site plan. So, all these ones are. I mean, there's kind of site lands, that's true, so it's it's pretty busy out there. You know, that's what it is, you know, if you deal with this, uh you know, uh. The place we're building, building off the side there by the detention pond that. We got easements, so that's, that's one of the places we go. And and it's, it's a convenient place to. You know, do that area because I could get water too. And and so that's an easier place to get water, sewer, I pump the sewer up to use or whatever. We so happen to do that. You know, so that's kind of why I chose that area to start with.
I don't think we ever knew your plan on building out there. We were just thought that you had split zoning, which was an issue. And I would have the results, you might have, then look at having Joshua been crushing that big and like, well, no, it's not.
Yeah, I don't know how how deep you guys are and like what's coming in down the funnel, what's in the funnel, you know, so.
Then look at most of us, ready to go.
And that's, that's fine. You know, I mean, I I Bernie kind of knew what was, you know, what we were going through because I, you know, talked to him a few times about. You know, messing with the D N R and everything else, so, but yeah, uh. You know, I think, I I just need to know what what we want because like I said, now I got. Thousands of dollars, you know, in the thing, thinking that, okay, well, you know, I don't need to. Spend a million dollars to upgrade the property to get one building now. So what we do out there works, works for what, you know, Casey does. And we get him out of the one fifty one corridor. And, yeah, I mean, uh if I don't build a building, then, you know. Move these trucks back over across the road and we can work from there, whatever, you know, it doesn't matter. I mean, I can, I can rock more parking lot. I mean. If you wouldn't believe, I didn't make my parking. And I gotta build a million dollar building and, you know, look at what I'm gonna make on that off my expenditure. But Casey is, I mean, I don't know if you know the guy much, you used to get, you talk to, your guys talking to about buying trucks. You know, and the guy provides an invaluable service to the trucking market in this town. Because when you spend eight to ten thousand dollars at a truck dealership and they can't fix your truck, they literally tell you to take it. Casey, they'll fix your truck. You still gotta pay them eighty or ten thousand dollars for not fixing it, but Casey will fix it. He's invaluable resource, I mean. They'd be, I'd be honored to have him out of my place. He's extremely good at like this. So, and he's extremely important to the Cedar Rapids market. Well, you know, who, nobody is. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if he's a savant or a garage, you know? I mean, sometimes I think he's more of a savant. Uh but yeah, I mean, that's kind of what we're doing. I just, the whole thing was, hey, I need to get out of this corridor, you know? Zach and Gus know, you know, they want it to look nice.
So I think there's a P and Z meeting next, is it Thursday, Tuesday, Tuesday? Um and they're going to discuss your property, so you can need to be here.
Okay, no, and that's, I mean, if that's.
So they can answer any of their questions, their concern firsthand.
So they'll look at the, they wanna look at the site plan and work on it over here.
The more documentation you can provide. And you know, everything revolving around that, I think that's better, because I mean, it's he. I know in your head, you know, we said, I wanna put a building up there for him to work on, you know, vehicles and stuff like that, but. For getting things approved, we have to have things more like concrete and, and. Basically have to follow the procedures that we set up to approve buildings and things like that. I mean, I I I'm sure, I know you you have exactly nine. We have to think, uh, we have to think long term on what we wanna do. I'm not saying we're against it, obviously, not. We're, we're here to see the community grow, but we also have to. Go through the proper steps, channels, and I know that can be annoying as someone on the other end wanting to get done.
Oh, it's, it's funny, it's just been two years and now we're in a month. You know, and it just keeps, and then, and then these kids keep changing, you know? And we just get a draw straight line, you know, let's, let's go do that. You know, we go P and Z. I mean, I guess I understand they're gonna look at, you know, what it is, and probably make sure that it agrees with light industrial, you know? For what we wanna do on them. I can believe that's probably what their job is, so that's fine. But, uh, my biggest thing is, is why even go to P and Z if you're gonna, you know, you're gonna expect me to spend a million dollars out there telling me I gotta sleep. I mean, I don't. I don't know how I got in an email, but I'm gonna sleep if I had to try that or see the letter app, so I don't know exactly what's working plus, you know, but. That gets something. So, I mean, there's a development behind, uh. What is it, behind vigor or whatever that E I B did and, you know, it's. You know, kind of somewhat what I'm doing, you know? If you wanna know where Casey's going, he does it right on the one fifty one corridor right now. It's the exact same thing, it's just. So, I don't know what documentation I can present, drive by it every day, because I'm in this town, you know? Can't, I pictured with a thousand words, there's your documentation, so. But there's no sense in going through all this. You're just gonna, uh, drive the costs and and wreck the project, which would have just been fine. Which you wrecked it, you know? Two years ago, when I would have been thousands of dollars out of my. You know, I had to just go to Casey's. And find somewhere else or just stay working in Zach's offices. You know, me, that and Gus, they get busy and screaming, they got tons of buildings being delivered, they bring it over and put it back in my rock pile. Because then it doesn't look well up here. You guys don't know that. That's what I provide. So, I provide a lot of things you're clearly good, no idea. So. Anything you don't need, just badge your mark. I'm here, you know, you have questions, whatever, that's fine, I mean. You know, Shane just needs to let us know what he's thinking and and, you know, we need to come to some terms on on compromise where, you know. I'm spending money that's well spent, it's it's reasonable. Uh, or, you know, or if you spend three hundred thousand dollars on a bridge over spillway on a detention pond, maybe you got money for me? I don't know, I doubt it, but hey, we never know. Like, bark, you guys said, I'll take free money from you, you know? Just trust me, nobody's ever given me any free money. I have something, I ain't looking for any help. I'm just looking to get stuff done. That's all. It's what I do, I get stuff done. Zach might be a pain in the ass, it's a pain in Chris's ass, I know that. It's just, but he gets stuff done, that's who he is, you know? And my God, don't stop talking to him. Don't cut off communication with that like that, you know? That's, that's, these are people you wanna have back, so because they get things done, we make things happen. You know, nobody else is crazy enough to spend their own dollars in backyard in perfect access. He's gonna do that. You know, it takes a little vision, you know? It's what towns need to survive, Bernie said. Vision, that's what it takes. Guys have vision, guys get things done, you know? And then you got Shane over here, he takes the guys like Zach, make sure they just get it done right, you know, so he's got. And then you got Shane over here, he takes the guys like Zach, make sure they just get it done right, you know, so he's got all the process to go through too. And Jack's came in, but, but, you know, I'm here, if you guys got any questions or whatever, but I just need to know, you know, what he wants, because we are sure now applying a lot of ways to be called up for, you know, curb and gutter, pay roads and storm sewers. And they, they want remains and all that. Just need to know.
P and Z meeting Tuesday at seven.
Done. Yeah, that's, that's fine, we'll just go another show, but, and excuse me a little bit. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Clerk's comments, Simba?
Um, we have ordered the, uh, bureau banners, um, we had fourteen ordered, uh, with pictures. About to approve and put your patents, so you can see what they're going to do anymore. And, um, then we're going to, uh, so we have places for thirty three banners, so we, um, ordered this version to fill in the other thirty three spots. So, um, that's. The only thing I can do down by the.
You know what it's on there, it's hard.
He didn't help, he didn't, he didn't.
No?
No?
Oh. Oh. I wrecked this one.
Way to go.
Yes, you're an idiot, you're a big hoe.
Anything else?
I've commented enough, so I need your things, so say. Um, and motion to Richard.
Motion.
Comment for the others?